Good evening, I'd like to call to order the City of Aurora Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd. Please call the roll.
Chairman Palmer?
Here.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Devine?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Mr. Ellsbury?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mrs. Head?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mrs. Owashisako?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sidwell?
Before you are the minutes of our last meeting on Wednesday, September 18th, are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion.
So move for approval.
Mr. Chambers?
Chambers.
Second. Motion's been made by Mr. Chambers. Motion's been made by Mr. Chambers and seconded by Mr. Ellsbury. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Devine?
Yes.
Mr. Ellsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Owashisako?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries. Before we begin our agenda tonight, I will let everyone know in the audience that this, in accordance with the State of Illinois Open Meetings Act, that anyone in the audience can come forward and talk about any item that is not on the agenda. If anyone would like to come forward and speak about an item that is not on the agenda, you'll have three minutes to do so now. Would anyone like to speak? Please note for the record that no one has come forward. Our first item on the agenda is an ordinance approving a text amendment to ordinance number 3100, being the Aurora zoning ordinance to modify certain portions being Section 3.3 definitions, Section 4.3 special uses in structures, and Table 1 use categories. City of Aurora, this is a public hearing. Before we have staff present the case, we'll ask our court reporter to swear on the staff.
I'd like to make just some introductions of the staff. My name is Ed Seaborn, I'm the City of Aurora zoning and planning director and also the city zoning administrator. Sitting next to me is Tracy Basick, our senior planner. Sue Jackson's our administrative assistant, also taking notes. And then from our law department, we have Deb Lang and Marissa Spencer, so for background. Just want to, for the record, the public notice was published in the Aurora Beacon News on September 17th, 2019. And as the chairman stated, the purpose of this meeting is a proposed text amendment modifying certain portions of the Aurora zoning ordinance specifically regarding cannabis uses in the City of Aurora in response to recent state of Illinois legislation. A little background information, on June 25th, 2019, the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act was signed into law by the State of Illinois effective January 1st, 2020. The act legalizes the purchase, possession, and private use of cannabis by adults over 21 years of age for recreational use. The majority of the law pertains to sales, processing, distribution taxes, and eligible users of cannabis. The act allows local government to have zoning authority to prohibit, which would be opt-out or limit, the location of cannabis business by enacting reasonable zoning regulations as long as they are not in conflict with the act. These regulations may include designating the time, place, manner, and number of cannabis operations, including minimum distances between certain locations. The local government, in this case, City, the City of Aurora, cannot license cannabis facilities as licensing authority remains exclusively under state jurisdiction. Generally, the act also limits dispensaries, which is one type of the license, from locating within 1,500 feet of another dispensary. And only dispensaries will be open to the public, and the state has limited the amount of dispensaries within the eight-county Chicago region. That would include Cook County, Lake McHenry, DuPage, Kane, Will, Kendall, and Grundy, to 47 dispensary licenses at least initially that would be issued in 2020. So obviously Aurora is just a small portion of that eight-county area. A little bit of history, the City of Aurora, along with a number of other communities in Illinois, went through a similar text amendment process back in 2014. That's when the State of Illinois first passed the Medical Cannabis Act. The City of Aurora put into place some regulations in the zoning ordinance for medical cannabis per the state act specifically for dispensaries and cultivation facilities in 2014. And a little history, the City of Aurora in 2014 did approve three special use permits for dispensaries within the City of Aurora, one on Route 59, and there were actually two on Lake Street. However, the State of Illinois did not issue a medical dispensary license for any of those three dispensaries. If you may recall, there were only two that were allowed at that time in Kane County, one in southern Kane County that went to the Village of North Aurora, and then DuPage County did have some medical dispensary licenses issued by the state. The closest one was in the City of Naperville. The City of Aurora also did approve one special use for a medical cultivation society, which was on Deal Road. That was again approved in 2014, and that facility was issued a license by the State of Illinois, and that has been operating, I believe, for the last four years. So using the already, so the intent is using the already established zoning ordinance regulations for medical cannabis and to expand it to cover the new cannabis regulations, we've in general included the following modifications to the Aurora zoning ordinance regulations. In general, it's to establish use categories and definitions for cannabis dispensing facilities, cannabis cultivation facilities, processing facilities, infuser facilities, and transporting facilities, and craft grower facilities. So originally, there were, originally, there were two license types, those were the dispensaries and the cultivation facilities, and we are adding definitions, we're modifying the definitions per the state act, and then we're adding the other four types of license that the state is also going to be licensing, which would be cannabis processing facility, cannabis infuser facility, cannabis transporting facility, and cannabis craft grower facility. These zoning regulations, again, would, the definitions replicate those in the state act. We would establish these facilities as special uses, which means any facility that comes in has to get a special use permit in certain zoning categories, and that is a public hearing for each site. And they would have to meet certain specific regulation standards for each. We would amend the use category tables to establish these facilities as special uses in certain districts, and then there's specific text amendments detailed in the attached draft ordinance. So again, there's six proposed licenses, two we already had in there for medical, and then the four additional. I think a lot of what everyone here today is, the dispensary licenses are probably the most visible, and it's really the only facility that the public would be allowed in. So we're proposing, you know, modifying the definition to match the state act, so cannabis dispensing facility, again, would be a special use, just like it was before, and it would be allowed as a special use if the underlying zoning district was B2 and B3, those are, those are some retail commercial zoning, DC, which is downtown core zoning, ORI, which is a light industrial district, and then M1 and M2, which are manufacturing districts. And in addition, we have a lot of areas, especially in certain areas of town, that are zoned, PDD, which is a planned development district, and within each of those planned developments, there's specific underlying zoning, so it would also be eligible in the business and industrial sections of the PDD zoning ordinance. And real quickly, some of the other conditions that would have to be met, the facilities which at all times have to comply with all state requirements of the state act. One of the things that we are adding, so that these would be only in high-traffic and major commercial shopping areas, is that these would only be allowed for a special use if they abut an arterial street, as shown on the city's comprehensive plan. There's limited arterial streets in the city, I think there's about 14 of them. The facility, one of the other restrictions we are proposing is that facilities not be located within 500 feet, measured property line to property line, of a school. That would include a grade school, middle school, alternative school, and high school. So that is, that is something new. The state act does not have any restrictions with distance to schools, so the city would propose 500 feet. The other conditions are that no cannabis or paraphernalia have, can be displayed or kept at the facility, so it has to be visible from outside the premises, including but not limited to depiction on signage. Another key thing for dispensaries is that onsite use is prohibited. There'd be no cannabis smoked, eaten, or otherwise consumed or ingested on the premises of these dispensaries, it would strictly be retail per the act. The state allows dispensaries to be open as much as 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We propose the same as what we had for medical dispensary, that it be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So there's more restrictive than the state. And then the city would be allowed to add additional conditions as part of a special use approval to provide for compatibility with adjacent land uses and mitigate potential impacts from a dispensing operation. Some of the other items that we get is part of a special use for these, and this is what happened with the medical, there was a lot of data that's required by the state. They have to have a very detailed plan for disposal of any cannabis or byproducts that are not sold. They have to have a very, very detailed security plan for the facility, including access, control, surveillance systems, onsite security personnel, and other security measures required by state or local regulations. And then again, they also have to have a copy of operating procedures adopted in compliance of state statutes. Individuals, I believe, working at the facilities, they also have to be at least 21 years of age. So some of, a lot of that was already in there for the medical dispensaries, but we did add some additional items. And just real quickly, the other types of licenses, again, cultivation, that is similar to what we had before. Again, special use would be required, which would be a public hearing, and they would only be allowed eligible for special use within the ORI, M1, M2, and the industrial areas of the PDD. So they have to be purely industrial-type areas. The other four more types of license, the processing facility would be pretty much identical to the cultivation facility, they'd be special uses in the exact same type of underlying zoning district. The same would be said for the infuser facilities and the transporting facilities. The last type of license is the, what the state calls a craft grower facility. This is a very limited cultivation-type facility. This would be eligible for special use within those industrial districts, plus the B3 district. B3 is a more intense commercial district. We don't have a lot of them in the city, but typically a B3 may allow more for like contractor shops and wholesale facilities, but it would not be allowed for special use in a B2, which is what our typical retailer shopping centers are. That is pretty much a summary of the proposal. Just the last item I wanted to touch on, you may have read the city council just recently passed a cannabis sales tax ordinance. The reason that has already been done is because it was required by the state to be done by October 1st, and that would be in effect if the city were to opt-in and adopt these proposed text amendments. I think that's all I have, unless there's any questions in me or staff.
Questions for staff? Hearing none, okay. I would like to instruct all in the audience that this is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak tonight will have the opportunity to do so. However, if you wish to speak, you do need to be sworn in. Once sworn in, we'll have you come forward. I will call one row at a time and ask people to come forward. It is important that when you start to speak, you need to speak, you need to state your name and your address in the city of your residence. If you have not signed in, it's also important you sign in, so if the next person in line could sign in here to keep the line moving. We are all good listeners, and therefore, if you want to repeat something somebody had said earlier, I would just ask that you would state that fact. We will also take notes up here, and the format here tonight is once the testimony's all heard, we will come back and try to answer the questions that have been presented this evening. So I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak before the commission, if you would please stand, and we will swear in all at once.
If everyone stands, I could just swear everyone in at once, and if I miss you, they could still come up.
All right. Please raise your right hand.
Just raise your right hand, you swear tell the truth, all the truth, and then about the truth itself you got.
Why don't we start right in front here, ma'am? Please, if you'd like to come up and just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Erica DiCarlo, and my address is 3134 Timber Hill Lane in Aurora. And I'm just here, I think we should opt-in, and I think that we should expand the cannabis businesses in Aurora and provide job opportunities here. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next person?
My name is Roger Brand, 2695 Ginger Woods Drive. I'm the executive chairman for Big Woods Marmion Neighborhood. I've got a couple of points that I want to make. First of all, I think the 500-foot limit is too close to schools. It should be at least the distance, the minimum distance between distribution facilities, which is 1,500 feet. It was mentioned about the sales tax, I understand that the city is proposing a 2% sales tax where the state allows up to 3%. With the financial woes that the city is under, I think it would be prudent that they use the entire 3% sales tax. It was also mentioned about the 2014 approval for the cultivation centers. At that time, there were several residents that were against the cultivation center. They were saying it was too close to residential areas. That was brought in front of, a court case was brought against, not the city, but saying that that cultivation center should not have been awarded a license. The court agreed with that. It is currently under appeal. That appeal ruling has not been made, and we're waiting on that. But the court did say that the cultivation center was in violation of the state laws. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the front row?
Hello, my name is Eli Hodap, and I live in the first ward at 941 Northfield Drive here in Aurora. I bought my house in Aurora about six years ago, but I've primarily lived in the Chicago suburbs all my life. First off, thanks to the city for hosting, this is really cool to have the opportunity to have my input on such an important issue. I'd like to fully support Aurora allowing the sale and recreation, of recreational marijuana inside the city. Living in Illinois, we're no stranger to raising taxes, as it seems like the government always needs more money. For instance, Kane County has until the 8th to come up with a decision on how to close a $1.1 million budget gap, and that solution likely will be raising our taxes once again. Yet, every time we do this, conservatives come out of the woodwork talking about fiscal responsibility and how the state needs new revenue sources. The sale of recreational marijuana is one of those new revenue sources, and disregarding that fact is the opposite of fiscal responsibility. With other local cities turning their back on this tax revenue, Aurora isn't a unique situation to benefit from these foolish decisions. Just because Naperville isn't allowing recreational sales doesn't mean that the ban doesn't exist in Naperville. Those people can come and spend their money and pay the taxes in Aurora instead. It's not like this behavior is unprecedented. Wheaton has oddly strict liquor laws, but what happens when you're in Wheaton and you want to buy a beer after those hours? You drive 10 minutes to a city that'll sell it to you and spend your money there instead, and they get your tax revenue. The genie's out of the bottle, recreational marijuana will be fully legal on the 1st of the year, whether you like it or not. Holding on to weird outdated puritanical beliefs from watching Reefer Madness one too many times isn't going to stop anyone from using marijuana. Believe it or not, people are buying and using marijuana in Aurora right now, and the city isn't benefiting from it. So why turn our backs on a new source of tax revenue? People get incredibly excited when a new bar or brewery opens in the area. Dispensaries opening really aren't any different. I travel a ton for work and have spent loads of times in areas of the world where marijuana has been legal for ages. All of these stories you will hear from concerned conservatives on how society will descend into anarchy if the people of Aurora can buy the devil's lettuce are completely imaginary and not at all based in reality. The only threat legalized marijuana poses in the City of Aurora is longer lines of Taco Bell. Again, I urge the city to disregard misguided and make-believe puritanical fear-mongering, and please vote to allow recreational marijuana dispensaries to open and operate inside the City of Aurora. And while you're at it, crank the sales tax up to 3%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the first row?
Hello, my name's Emily McDonald. I am actually out of Oswego, 110 Tomahawk, but my business is actually here in Aurora. I am actually here on behalf of Cultivate Me, which is a lifestyle brand based out of Las Vegas that educates the public on THC and CBD. I am personally based out of the Aurora office. Cultivate Me is a curator's trade, but consumers by choice. Cultivate Me is a community of enthusiastic and discerning early adopters seeking to live the best CBD and THC-inclusive lives. I could say we're at the bleeding edge of technology and advancements, but that is to say this is a cutting-edge process. However, marijuana is neither new nor unproven. Its medicinal uses have been legal in Illinois since 2013, and the first dispensary is open to card-holding public in September of 2014. As early as April 2019, over 62,000 qualifying patients have participated in the state's medical cannabis and opioid alternative programs. In a state that needs money for just about everything, we should be taking every chance we can to reap the benefits of the taxation of recreational marijuana. There will be a very small amount of new users, however, the amount of legal taxable users will increase exponentially. Pharma cannabis north of Aurora, now Vera Life, is 3.3 miles away from where I'm standing, just far enough away that us here in Aurora will not be reaping the benefits of that tax revenue. Having a dispensary within our borders will not increase high driving, as Aurora is surrounded by dispensaries in other towns. In fact, by refusing to allow dispensaries within our borders, we will be encouraging the already thriving black market. It is this black market that your grandmother is afraid of. It is this black market that throws a little something extra on top that provides the cartridges that have caused the great vaping crisis of 2019. It was a weird vitamin E thing that caused all the panic. It wasn't good dispensary quality stuff. Safe, regulated marijuana should be encouraged within our borders, so I ask you to kindly consider allowing recreational dispensaries within our borders, not just so we can increase the taxes, that would of course benefit schools, roads, and the other needs of this magnificent city, but because it would benefit the community, not just fiscally but socially, as the user safety and the decrease in drug trafficking should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the first row? If not, why don't we go to the second row? Sure?
Thank you very much, members of the City Planning Commission. I was hoping there would be-
If I could just have you state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob McGregor, 394 Blonde Circle, Aurora. I was hoping there would be more city council members here tonight. I served four terms in the Minneapolis City Council and was one of the leaders with the Planning Commission in Minneapolis, and I helped start the Metropolitan Council in the Twin Cities, which is a planning group. And years ago, Mayor of Chicago appointed me Commissioner of Planning for the City of Chicago, so I've been involved in planning for a long time. I'm here tonight, we all know marijuana has been legalized in Illinois, but it's mislabeled, and there is really much information, and you will hear a lot of it tonight, I suspect. Today's marijuana is not the old marijuana that you all are familiar with when you grew up. It is six to 20 times stronger. It's a dangerous drug, and citizens are clueless about this new drug and how dangerous it is. And it is definitely a gateway drug to heroin and other tough drugs. Those of us who have lost loved ones to heroin, and have worked with medical people and law enforcement people, know that it's absolutely a dangerous gateway drug. And the Mexican drug lords who corrupted Mexico are among the strongest supporters of legalization, because they make their money on fentanyl and heroin, and they know that it's a gateway drug. Drug abuse in the United States, as we know, is very serious. Some 70,000 people die every year, and marijuana fits in there somewhere. And we ought to be very, very concerned. We all need to do more to confront this real problem all over the country, and it's hitting the suburbs big time, as you know. According to the National Institute of Health, where marijuana is used among teenagers, it increases 24%. Next, mental illness and psychiatric disorders have substantially increased where marijuana is used. This is one of the best books you can get on this by Alexander Burnson, a former New York Times reporter, and he has been quoted often on this, and he's met with the top medical people all over the world to document that what this does to especially teenage brains lowers IQ somewhat, some 8% or more. And next, we know that wherever it has been legalized, traffic accidents have increased substantially, and the law enforcement officials here in Aurora and elsewhere do not have the proper tools to test suspects. Now on taxes, I know all of us involved in government, that we need taxes. What they're finding in communities that have legalized it, there's so many other increased costs with traffic costs, crime that goes up, hospital visits and so on, that it almost becomes a wash. You don't get all that tax revenue that people keep talking about. And so I will conclude by saying this is a time for leadership, a time to, and by the way, I teach leadership all over the world, and I'm an old guy still trying to stay on the case. So I hope that you will stand up and vote to opt-out, and this is a dangerous, dangerous drug. Thank you very much for listening, and I have a longer statement that I sent to members of the city council, and I'll leave my statement with somebody here. So thank you, and onward and upward with confidence. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. I will proceed again across that second row. Anyone else want to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Markie Logman, I live at 495 North Lake Street. This is I. Is it on? Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, but it's not on.
All right. That's okay. My name is Marjorie Logman. I live at 495 North Lake Street here in Aurora. It looks like from the previous speakers I should qualify myself. I'm a very upbeat grandma, definitely not a Puritan and a loyal Democrat. What I want to say, things that are happening in Aurora lately have given me great concern. My family, my father's side were big King County Republicans and my mother's side all worked for the Dalics. So I had quite an upbringing. How crazy is it that we have these town halls after the city council? I know it was a deadline, but they passed the taxes. So really, they've already made up their mind. If they didn't pass the taxes, it would be, you know, up for question. Because some of these town halls, I think, become more, you know, how to appease the populace rather than really listening to us and being an avenue for change. And I think that has to change very much. Knowing it will not change minds that have already been made up, I say no to cannabis sales. Smoking is no good for lungs, no matter who rolls it, but I know you will go ahead and vote for cash over health. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the second row? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Barnett. I live at 3630 Fairfax Court East in Aurora. I'd like to say thanks to the commission for this opportunity to speak and be a part of the public process. I wanted to urge the commission to opt in and I would like to ask a question. Could someone please fill me in on what the process is going forward after this town hall? I know there was a bit mentioned on the Facebook post, but could someone please like spell it out for me so I know the due process and what's going to happen going forward? Is it going to come through a referendum, et cetera?
Ed will answer that now and explain the process starting tonight and going forward.
So the Planning Commission, this body, will make a recommendation. That recommendation will go on to our Building, Zoning and Economic Development Committee, which... Yes. Which is made up of five aldermen and that will be next Wednesday at 4:00 PM, fifth floor of this building. That's on October 9th. From there, it will go to the City Council Committee of the whole on Tuesday, October 15th at 5:00 PM. And then it will go on to the City Council Agenda on Tuesday, October 22nd at 6:00 PM in this room.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else in Row 2? Okay, we'll start over here with Row 3. Please come forward.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Alexander Perez, 1544 Soffesburg.
Your name again?
Alexander Perez, 1544 Soffesburg. So I am the owner of the Grove Recreational Dispensary. I am a social equity applicant that is vying for one of the licenses as are any other individuals that are social equity applicants. I want to underline that I am a social equity applicant because Aurora is one of the very few places outside of the city of Chicago that actually has social equity zones. And I'm here to represent those individuals in the city of Aurora that represent those areas, those zones themselves. If we opt out, we're dealing another blow to those communities that have already been affected and further excluding individuals who should have a seat at the table. I commend the state and the governor for their efforts to address the disparity, but I hope that Aurora will opt in and give those affected a chance to gain and give back to those communities like the Grove would like to do. This city has a chance to create opportunity for many minority individuals that have been negatively impacted by the misguided marijuana drugs. The map put out by the state detailing disadvantaged communities covers a large portion of the city of Aurora. It would be a misstep to not open the doors for so many individuals to contribute to this community and for individuals that have been wrong in those communities. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next in Row 3, would anyone like to come forward? Please come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ting Wong. My address is 2974 Savannah Drive in Aurora. So my husband and I have lived in this city for about 11 years and we raised our daughter here. About three years ago, the daughter of our neighbor, a nine-year-old little girl, was killed in a car accident. The mini van she was in was hit by a car going about 85 miles per hour in a 35 mile per hour dome in the wrong lane. The high alcohol level and marijuana was detected in the body of this perpetrator driver and later the driver was sentenced 13 years in jail. Our neighborhood lost one of our sweetest, loving little girl in our life. And our daughter, who's right here, lost one of her best friend in school. In addition to the health-related problems, there's no doubt that using marijuana leads to more traffic accidents, especially fatal accidents. High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas Program reported that in Colorado, quote, "Since recreational marijuana was legalized, marijuana-related traffic deaths increased 151%." Dear officers, if you opt in to allow selling recreational marijuana in Aurora, more and more such tragedies like what happened to this nine-year-old little girl will happen in Aurora. How could you look at the eyes of the parents who lost their kids and tell them, "Sorry, tax is more important than people's life and safety. So I decided to choose tax and revenue over your children's life or your beloved family member's life." And furthermore, if we allow selling recreational marijuana, we're sending a very dangerous and misleading message to our kids that using marijuana is not a malice. It's acceptable and it's easily accessible. Some people may argue that if you don't want your kids to use marijuana, you should teach them at home to make them the right choice. Unfortunately, I'm not that sure about that. I'm not confident. Let's ask ourselves a question, well, all parents. How many hours per day could we spend with our kids? I would say four to five hours at most if sleeping time is not included. And kids spend way more time at school and also hanging out with their friends. We all know what peer pressure is and how people, especially young youth, could be influenced by peer pressure. If all of my daughter's friends use marijuana and she still refused, she will be isolated or even bullied. I'm just not that confident that she could make the right choice under such pressure and temptation around her. So please opt out. Please keep our city a safe, strong and healthy environment to raise family, to live. No matter how thirsty we are, we should never drink poisonous water. We don't need drug profit to develop our hometown. May God bless America and God bless Aurora. Thank you. So may I suggest, if the people in the audience support, agree with me, let them stand up?
I would just ask that we keep order here, so if we can just go on to the next speaker.
Okay.
Please come forward.
And my name is Elan. You may also call me Ricky. That beautiful lady gave a very emotional speech and my wife, so probably I don't have to state my address again. Many people who support recreational marijuana believe that the city may increase revenue via collecting sale taxes. Is it true or miss? Here are some lessons we can learn from our neighbor, Canada, where marijuana has been legalized for almost a year. During the first quarter after legalization, Canada's top seven marijuana growers lost nearly $300 million. I'm talking about the currency of Canadian dollar for the rest of my speech. It is also reported that British Columbia State Run Marijuana Store is still losing money today. Yes, you can be correct. They are still losing money. The entire State Run Marijuana Store is acting to lose 25 million Canadian dollar in the first full year, even though it has monopoly on sales for the six months and has the permanent control of online transaction. Canadian marijuana sale was about 5.9 billion for the first quarter, excuse me, for the fourth quarter of 2018. The black market accounts for 4.7 out of the 5.9, nearly 80%. Even the CEO of Canadian leading legal marijuana company admitted that, quote, "Black market business has never been better." All I just said are from very reliable resource. Just Google "Canadian legal marijuana losing money." You'll find more news like this. So people might asking why? The reading is very simple. The pricing in the legalized store just could not compete with the black market. The price in legal store is more than $10 per gram, why it's less than $6 per gram in black market. Legal store need have physical stores and black market, they use street. Legal stores have to hire salaried employees and for the black market, most of are self-employed and most of them are consume themselves. Therefore, it is highly unrealistic that marijuana will bring significant tax revenue to our city. But I know for sure it will pay for the cost of all the negative effects. Increased crime rate, increased traffic accident rate, increased therapy cost and decrease of working efficiency. I'd like to end my speech with two moral stories my parents told me when I was a kid. First, it's stupid to paint a cake to satisfy your hunger. And second, you should never quench your thirsty with poison water. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in Row 3?
My name is Kuehu. I'm from Plumfield, but Aurora is actually, I consider it part of the, you know, community that we live in because I lived in Naperville and I used to bring my kids to Aurora, like, you know, Red Oak Nature Center and places like that, so.
Can you speak up or it's closer to the-
Oh, sorry.
If we could maybe just straighten that mic, I think it might help a little bit. There we go. And if you could just state your street address as well, please?
My address is 11530 Century Circle, Plumfield. I feel like I'm part of the Aurora community and that's why I feel like I, you know, I should come to the meeting and speak up. I appreciate the chance to speak to you tonight and urge you to consider opt out of selling recreational cannabis in the city of Aurora for the benefit of its residents and especially for the well-being of the younger generations. Allowing for cannabis retail sale in the city increases the likelihood of more fatal traffic accidents as mentioned by the gentleman and the lady earlier. But I would like to bring some source of facts from Colorado. As revealed in the report named by impacts of marijuana legalization in Colorado, released by the Colorado Division of Criminal Justice of Research and Statistics on October 26, 2018, the number of fatalities where a driver tested positive for any cannabinoid almost tripled from the year 2013 to 2017. Organized crime cases almost quadrupled from 2012 to 2017. So it is crucial for the city to make consistent decisions that continue to maintain a safe environment for the 200,000-plus residents. Also, as parents, it is our job to do our very best to provide a clean and healthy environment for our children. Studies show that at least 10% of those who use marijuana become addicted. And as mentioned by the gentleman earlier, that marijuana is known to be the gateway drug to more addictive drugs such as heroin. Marijuana addictions are related to many growth problems such as brain damage, mental issues, and decreased school performance, just to name a few. If we don't want marijuana to be easily accessible to our children, there's no reason to make it easily accessible to other people. It is difficult to say no to temptations. The presumed tax revenue from commercial recreational marijuana sale and the marginal convenience it brings to those who need it for medical reasons must be weighed in with the definitive foreseeable expensive social cost if marijuana becomes widely available. So I'm here to urge the members of the city council to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you. Going across Row 3. And just a reminder that if you haven't signed in, please make sure you do so to the right here as you come up.
John Vincent, 1248 Oakleaf Court in Aurora. I would, one thing I would just ask is what is the benefit to the city? I can only think of one and that's even dubious and we know what that is. Tax revenue. But the unintended consequences are employers out of Colorado trying to find somebody that can pass a drug test for construction jobs, bus drivers, CDL drivers, et cetera, where you have to pass a drug test is exceedingly hard. You look at what those employers have to go through to try to find one candidate that's qualified and yet can pass a drug test. Aurora police, I just read this today from the Illinois police, that what viable test do we have for what really is the highest level or higher level of THC in the bloodstream that causes a DUI? Is there really a good measurement for it? As far as our young people, that was talked about, we know about the deleterious effects on their brains, but who knows what's in the candy? I mean, we're going to have edibles. Who knows what's in the candy that somebody's going to give to our kids? Or do they care? Do our kids know what they're getting? And this, I read this and this is, I just put down, really? In the state of Illinois, here's the law. You're not supposed to smoke in public places. Really? In cars. Really? On school grounds? Okay, maybe. In proximity, whatever that means, of anyone under 21. Really? In proximity of a bus driver. Okay? But in proximity of a police officer, that probably would work. In proximity of a firefighter. In proximity of a corrections officer. Really? How's that going to be enforced? And if you do smoke in the proximity of a public place or in your car, what's the penalty for that? That's what the law's supposed to be. So going back to, well, the one benefit, a couple of, as someone pointed out in Colorado, hospitalizations from marijuana-related, after legalization increased 148% from 2012 to 2016, marijuana-related ER visits increased 52% in the same timeframe. So please opt out.
Hi, Mary Ann Vincent, 1248 Oakleaf Court. Most of my comments are about the unintended consequences of legalized recreational marijuana. My first two comments, I'll number them, are from an ER doctor, Dr. Samuel Wang, W-A-N-G. Today's marijuana, this is kind of redundant, but there's more to it, is 20% more potent than the marijuana from the 60s and 70s, which was 3.7%. Today's is 80%. Today's is 80%. But each person, anyone who buys this cannot be certain because some cannabis concentrates can get close to 100%. Who is regulating this? And children as young as two years old are getting into their caregivers. This is from Colorado where they've had legalized marijuana. It's about 2014. I saw a couple of dates, but anyway, getting into caregivers cannabis, 27% increase in children and teens needing emergency treatment for marijuana toxicity. Now, the rest of my comments are from Newsweek. I looked online, it's from today's date, Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019. There's higher marijuana intoxicated driving. There's illegal movement of legally grown cannabis, for instance, from Colorado to other states or Illinois to other states where it's illegal. There are educational problems in the middle school and high school. And back to children, and my husband mentioned this, the edible marijuana. People put it in brownies, you know, kids are going to eat this. So it's a higher, higher ER visits with edible consumption by children and pets relating an illness and death. There's a regulatory or potency confusion. Number seven, I haven't been listing all my numbers, but these are all unint- excuse me, all unintended consequences. The cost of increased law enforcement because of drugged driving accidents, fatal crashes, loss of productivity, increased gang crime. So we have to question the cost of these, the benefit of any tax dollars. And in Colorado, there's a high teen drug expulsion. Is that really what we want? Next, a homeless population will explode because people are non-functioning. I used to live in Colorado, I, I went to college there, my dad lived there, visited there frequently, was there in the 60s and 70s. I went back, we have a daughter there. It looked like a flashback, people just asking us for money. They don't want it for food, they want it to get high. People aren't going to work, they're just sleeping, they're, oh. So anyway, it's a major problem and homelessness exploded in Colorado. Tourist dollars in Colorado went to marijuana, not to visit the beautiful state of Colorado. That's where the tourist dollars went. And there's also marginal impact because any increased tax revenue, the percent, I didn't write it down, but anyway, it's a higher cost of all these other things needing increased law enforcement and everything. As of March 2019, Colorado cannabis growers have been left to improvise since there are no commercial pesticides labeled for legal use on cannabis plants. So there has been misuse of pesticides. So there are improvised concoctions of chemicals, including undefinable mixtures. So what is going on? Who is regulating this? My last point, forget the notion that prisons filled with minor drug offenders would be relieved. Well, it's blown out of proportion in Colorado. We should learn from states who've had this legal for over five years. There is much to be learned. This will going to cost way more than we think we're going to gain. And we will need to build more drug rehab. If this does pass, I hope there's going to be some of this so-called profit for the drug rehab that will be needed. As has already been said, it's a gateway drug. Thank you.
Next in the third row.
Victoria Williams, 3491 Willow View Court, City of Aurora. Thank you for holding this. With the legalization of cannabis in Illinois, I'd like to submit a proposal to the City of Aurora, offering residents vendor training, general education, and social equity programs to the community. In this newly regulated market, it is important that we not only adhere to the laws, but that people know that there is a safe way for cannabis to be distributed, consumed, and disposed. We believe it also helps dispel the negative connotation around cannabis. Aurora Cannabis Consultants was the first approved responsible vendor in the state of Illinois. The training courses that we provide include a wide range of topics like health and safety, inventory tracking, and labeling requirements. We deliver the training in an interactive classroom setting that breaks down the 610-page HB1438 law in a comprehensive way for everyone to understand using our state-approved manual. Currently, the only agents that are required to receive this training are those involved in handling the sale or cannabis, the sale of cannabis or cannabis-infused products. However, we feel training is necessary for everyone and we provide a customizable training program to serve the masses. In addition to the state-required training, we provide additional training courses to the communities affected by social economic injustices surrounding cannabis through our Put Illinois Back to Work Program. This program covers a wide variety of many trainings that are much needed in the workplace. A few examples are customer service skills, prosody, interview skills, phone and email etiquette, sales techniques, and marketing. As stated previously, this program is customizable to fit any age and/or education level. Aurora Cannabis Consultants also provide marketing materials for the public outreach campaigns. With over five years of educating the public and marketing cannabis, we believe that this partnership will benefit us both a great deal. The state of Illinois has already released grant applications to apply for funding for community colleges and other educational institutes to aid in education training in this market. I am willing to email that information to the entire committee. And as long as I get your contact information, I'll get it offline. Recreational marijuana creates jobs and bring down unemployment rates. Crime typically happens in communities highly affected by poverty, the disproportionate area that Illinois has talked about giving the social equity status to. Cannabis Development Program is an option for the City of Aurora. We create information for the city websites. We can designate a green zone. We're willing to create a city compliance guidelines. And we have also won our own, not from the state, created something called "How to Spot Fake Vapes." I believe that every parent here is concerned about the safety of their children. I too am a parent who have a special needs child. So we created a program called "How to Spot Fake Vapes, Vape Con cartridges." That's what they're talking about now that has everyone in fear. And what the state, the City of Aurora does not know is there's a bunch of copycats out here. And the copycats is easily to be done. They order these things offline and say that they look, they look just like the name brand, but they're not. Cannabis does not just consist of smoking. Cannabis also involves topicals that are not just THC, but they're THC slash CBD that does not get you high. Everyone is not using cannabis to get high. As I've said before, I respect the opinion of every concerned parent here today. I am a concerned parent myself. The state HB1338 bill is extremely thorough as it relates to what product will look like and package safety and the regulations to keep our city safe. If you do not know, packaging has to be done so children cannot open it. If you do not know, the dispensaries will help keep residents from getting potential laced tainted products, which also will cut down on the opioid addiction. If you do not know, then we're here to help you. Allow us to come in. Our facility is located already in Aurora. Located 853 North Highland Avenue. We were the very first to get approved to actually allow dispensary agent training. It's on a press release issued by the governor. It's 26 other vendors in the entire state of Illinois that was approved to do this training. We have did something to keep the city safe, if you will allow us to keep the city safe. As far as the safety of vape carts, I would just like to show three poses, these photos on my iPad, that just talks about how to spot vape cartridges. And I know everybody won't see it, but we have created a program already. So teens and children will have the option and the opportunity to learn about the potential harms of cannabis. Do not buy it off the street. Allowing you guys to opt-in and say yes to regulating cannabis will actually keep our children safe. They won't be allowed to buy it on the streets, you know? Even though they say 21, it's still a kid to me. So I'll say the age limit is 21, he's still a child. And if he's able to go into the dispensary, he will be safer using cannabis legally. Thank you.
Anybody else in row three?
Hello, everybody. My name is Ningun. I'm the landlord of the 3138 Richland Land in Aurora. I want to encourage you to opt out the recreation marijuana sales in Aurora. I feel like marijuana for the people in the town is bad. According to researchers, marijuana is harmful for health, especially for the brain. Mix alcohol and marijuana together can dangerous life, especially for the people who is less the self-control. He always want to, but he cannot control by himself for the dead people. And then the tax again from selling marijuana will not be enough to cover a broad social ill that it can bring to our city. Is it easier for a city to turn bad than to turn good? In conclusion, to keep the city of Aurora safe, here I strongly ask Commissioner to deny marijuana sales in Aurora. Thank you for your attention.
Anybody else in row three? Okay, let's move to row four on this side.
Hello, my name is Fontolmar. 1230 Soffasburg Avenue, Aurora, Illinois. Thank you for allowing me for this opportunity to talk to you five people today. As an Auroraan citizen, this is my hometown. I grew up here since the time I was three years old. And I think, I know what it's like to be a minority and to be targeted in Aurora for illegal use of drugs. And I've had many friends affected negatively from marijuana possession, even my family. For, and they had many lost job opportunities and had it negatively impacted their record. And I feel that is unjust since it is not becoming legalized. I think in my opinion, legalizing will undercut the black market and keep it out of the children of hands as it will be harder for them to reach, to reach them in illegal sources. And when used by responsible adults, it would be, it would be a great opportunity as a business owner to bring this to Aurora. Thank you for the opportunity to talk and for legalizing marijuana for recreational use.
Next in row four.
Hey, Edgar Cias, Tullwood Sunland Drive. I was not planning at all to talk, so. I sound like an idiot, because I am.
You could just state the city?
Aurora.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm opt-out, I think, you know, especially for young people are complacent and stupid enough that we don't need the city to stamp another thing to give their stamp approval to another thing to keep us more stupid and more complacent. And second, I'd like to address the argument that the tax revenue will, is any good. Our problem is not a revenue problem, our problem is a spending problem. We can't just keep moving the goalposts and just pretend everything is okay. And that's all.
Row four, coming across. Please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm probably going to echo a little bit of what this gentleman here said. And I know he said he's an old guy, well, I'm not probably a little bit younger than him, but.
You could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Kevin Bastian, I live at 891 Laurel Drive in Aurora. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand today to oppose the sale of recreational marijuana in the city of Aurora. The reasons I have are many, but first and foremost is the fact that recreational marijuana is harmful to a person's health. Now, some may justify and say that alcohol and cigarettes are harmful, but they're still legal. While there will always be individuals that will abuse alcohol and tobacco, tobacco is not a mind-altering drug. And small amounts of alcohol, especially red wine, has significant health benefits. Recreational marijuana does not. And in fact, when people mix alcohol and marijuana, which will surely happen, the combination becomes deadly. Real quick, a little story. When I was 20 years old, one night, I had been out drinking beer and smoking pot. On the way home, driving up Route 25 just north of Butterfield Road, about a block and a half from where I lived in North Aurora, I passed out behind the wheel and woke up just as I was going down an embankment of about a 45-degree angle as my car wedged against a tree. And luckily, the tree prevented my car from overturning. Thankfully, the North Aurora Police were in the area, had a tow truck pull my car out. And when they saw I lived nearby, escorted me home without ticketing or arresting me. But that little incident is beside the point. There is also a mountain of evidence that concludes that marijuana use leads to psychosis and mental illness as well as respiratory and lung damage to chronic users. God made our bodies the way he did for a reason. Fish die without water and human beings die without air. The only thing you should be breathing in your lungs is O2. Anything else is harmful. But you know, I, ladies and gentlemen, I suggest this meeting tonight is just a token meeting held to pacify the public, that we have some say in this matter. But from the information I have read so far, it seems to me the city has already made up its mind. The chief financial officers and other city revenue officials are already licking their chops with dollar signs in their eyes, discussing at what percentage to levy the tax on revenue from the sale of marijuana. Now, I suggest we're going to hear all manner of justification for voting to pass this resolution. They will use all kinds of semantics, such as people are going to use it anyway. And it's going to cost us money anyway, so why not tax its use? They will turn a blind eye all in pursuit of the almighty dollar. It's nothing but a big cash cow, but that doesn't make it right. And if you think about it, if the city passes this, they are actually encouraging people to use marijuana. Now, they may say things like, "We're just making it available to people who will use it anyway." But think about it, ladies and gentlemen, if people don't patronize the facility, that means no revenue for the city. The whole point of opening a successful business is to do everything you can to make sure it succeeds. So the city has to promote the new business. A quote from the Beacon News said officials favor a 2% tax as a compromise between getting revenue and attracting high-end marijuana stores, no pun intended. One official said, "We're looking at being competitive." But ladies and gentlemen, But ladies and gentlemen, if you were to ask our fine mayor and the city council, I may make you laugh with a few of my comments here, but if you were to ask the mayor and the city council if they smoke marijuana, I don't think I need to tell you what their answer would be. I'm going to leave this comment out about the governor, because I don't want to be politically incorrect, but I get emails all the time from the city of Aurora of all the great things our city has to offer. Things such as empowering our youth. Well, how does letting a recreational marijuana facility descend on the city of Aurora help empower our youth? What kind of message does that send to the youth of our city, even if they are twenty-one, to have a temptation like that at their disposal? That maybe some kid who is facing some overwhelming problems in his life, when he feels the pressures of life are getting him down, might just say some night, "I think I'll go down to the corner store and buy some pot and get high to ease the pain." Ladies and gentlemen, I mentioned earlier, a successful business has to be promoted. This poses a little dilemma for the city. Like all businesses, there certainly should be a ribbon cutting for the grand opening. Charlie Silver Spoon Creamery opened right down the block on the corner of Stolpin Downer, and I believe the mayor and a few city officials had some ice cream with the new owners. So I have a question. Will the mayor and the city council have a joint with the owners of the new marijuana facility? If not, why not? It's the height of hypocrisy. The message at the ice cream parlor was, "Come on down and enjoy what this new business has to offer," which in this case is some delicious ice cream. Well, why not the same at the marijuana facility? It's laughable. Maybe we'll start to see ads in the newspaper and on billboards throughout the city. Here, I wrote the first one. Come on down, folks, and patronize this business and experience what great quality weed they have to offer. A smooth taste and a mellow high that you will love with just the right amount of THC to relax your mind, fry your brain, forget your troubles, get your creative juices flowing, and give you that euphoria you crave. But remember to smoke responsibly and don't smoke and drive. I ask responsible citizens to stand with me and urge the mayor and the city council to oppose this in the city of Aurora. And I'll end my little tirade with a quote that was coined back in the seventies. Only dopes smoke dope.
I might clarify one point. You did say that you think this is a token meeting, so on behalf of everyone here, the commission is made up of volunteer Aurora citizens that serve as plan commission members, and we do take our responsibility serious. So we're here as a sounding to listen to public testimony and make a recommendation to city council. If we can go to row five, we start on this side.
Good evening. My name is Greg Zhang. I'm the landlord for thirty-one seventy East Winchester Court, Aurora. My full-time job is a mechanical engineer in a large manufacturing company. Today, I'm going to talk about the impact marijuana on employment. Marijuana is a federally illegal drug. And most companies, or if not every company, strictly prohibit employees from using marijuana. We have a drug screening process during hiring. So if applicant failed a drug test, the application is automatically rejected. If an employee is caught performing a duty under the influence of marijuana or any other drug, he or she is subject to termination. CDLs, as one gentleman mentioned, commercial driver license holders, or sometimes we call truck drivers. They are frequently and randomly selected for drug tests, including marijuana, under the federal regulations. So if they fail the test, they are subject to termination according to our company's policy as well. So in summary, to help more people finding jobs or keep them employed, please opt-out. Thank you.
Next in row five.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hongding Chen. I live at nine-nine-zero Middle Ridge Drive, City of Aurora. Today, I'm here to against allowing the creation of marijuana sales at Aurora. And here are the reasons why I'm against that. First, I believe we will jeopardize our community's safety at Aurora instead of just questioning about the tax revenues, which a lot of people already talked about that, so I won't repeat that again. We will increase the criminal rate and also increase the safety concerns. Second, I have really concern regarding to the once we open the business, the marijuana going to be penetrated to the communities and causing a lot of issues. Like the gentleman mentioned before, our company also have those drug tests randomly. What if someone actually buys marijuana and brings to the food and sell to the public? Maybe you get, if someone doesn't know, and perhaps me or you and eat that and eat that food and without knowing that, and end up just fail the test and lose a job. What if we give this food to the children? What that can be? So therefore, I strongly request, hoping the city of Aurora can opt-out to the sales of recreational marijuana use. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wei Huang. I live in nine-ninety Middle Ridge Drive in Aurora. And I lived in Aurora for more than five years. I love this city. So therefore, I encourage you to oppose recreational marijuana sales in our city. So earlier this morning, this evening, when I left home, I was hoping this. And my kids saw it, and my little son asked me, "Mom, is that a sign for no poison IV?" At that moment, I thought it would be great that it was that easy, no poison IV. But it is not. And that moment hit me that I remember I first know the word marijuana when I was in college. And since then, this word didn't appear in my life very often until recently. And now, my little boy may have to know this word when he was only three, only five years old. So I feel sad about that. So that encouraged me to come here to protect our kids from exposing to marijuana so early and so often than they should. It's not just a father or a mother's job, because we are talking recreational marijuana. It's not medical. Allowing recreational marijuana sales sends a signal to the kids that marijuana is okay. It's not a big deal. It is not. It's not okay. Marijuana especially dangerous for young people, because human brains are not fully developed until they are when they are age twenty-five, which is above the age of the legal age they can purchase marijuana. And also, researchers in Harvard and Northwestern found that recreational marijuana smokers aged from eighteen to twenty-five show abnormalities in the shape, volume, and density of certain areas of the brain. Those bad consequences tend not to reverse, but will increase mental health problems. Also, marijuana is addictive, and the dependency on drug will increase with legalization. Among cocaine, alcohol, and marijuana, which one is the most difficult to give up? Marijuana. And I know that maybe you would say you train your kids and make them aware that it is it is harmful for you. But think about that. We all have to pass a written test and a driving test to get our driver's license. Can everybody drive safely? So if brain or health is not enough for you to say no, what about lives? Studies in Colorado show dramatic increase in marijuana-related traffic deaths since recreational marijuana was legalized. One person was killed every three days in accidents, where drivers were tested positive for marijuana. We are talking about losing people's lives due to the use of marijuana. Lives are priceless. Lives are priceless. I sent out my email to show my concern to Mr. Mayor and the Alderman, and one replied to me saying that if we opt-in, if we opt-out, he's worried about losing the tax revenue. But I would like, in response to that, if we were allowed to recreate marijuana sales in Aurora, the city will true get tax revenues, but the majority of the profit will still go to those sales companies. The city will not get a lot, and we will need to pay for the bad consequences with people's health, people's lives, city's safety, and the city's reputation, and much, much more money. And what we will get will never match up with what we need to pay. So I strongly urge you to oppose recreational marijuana sales in our city. And this is not in my speech, but when I was looking at the research about Colorado, because you know, every year they have this annual report about Colorado since two thousand and thirteen. And that reminds me of what, you know? Reminds me of the time when I was working in the lab. You know, in these labs, they have like this testing animals, like the rats. And then they put those cancer materials into the rats to see how the tumor grow. And Colorado now, it looks like this little rats to me. These little rats in the experiment, in the labs. And the recreational marijuana is just like this these materials that cause cancer. And let's not put this in our city, not that the tumor has any opportunity to grow in our home, in our city. Thank you for this opportunity.
Next in row five.
Hello, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chin Feng Wang. I live in eleven oh-four Stone Heaven Circle, Aurora. I have lived in Aurora for thirteen years. One of my two boys was born in Aurora. They are now eleven and seventeen, attending middle and high schools. I love the city and the neighborhood, because it is a safe place to live and raise children. We all know in a desperation to find a new revenue source to fix the state's financial crisis, Illinois passed a law in June to allow recreational marijuana sales and use. But please keep in mind that federal government still classifies this marijuana as a Schedule One drug, which means it remains illegal. According to the DEA, Schedule One drugs, substances, or chemicals are defined as drugs with no currently accepted medical use and a high potential for abuse. This classification puts marijuana in the same category as heroin. As this gentleman said, today's marijuana is not the ones in the sixties. The high potency is linked to increases in addiction, psychosis, and violence. States that have legalized it, like Colorado, have seen an increase in emergency room visits, hospitalizations, poison control center calls, and the increase in use in every age category, including youth. The frequent marijuana use during adolescence can affect attention, memory, decision-making, and motivation. And that use, and those people who are more likely to miss classes, do poorly in school and drop out. Marijuana is the most widely used illegal drug among minors aged twelve to fifteen to seventeen, according to two thousand and eighteen National Survey on Drug Abuse and Health. Allowing recreational marijuana sales in Aurora will make it more accessible to our vulnerable children and make it more dangerous than ever. I do not want marijuana addicts and recreational users driving in and out of your community, my community regularly to purchase the drug. I do not want easy access with toxic substances to my children. Let's all take actions to protect the safety of our kids and the health of our community. I urge CDL Aurora to opt-out the sales of recreational marijuana. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wei Guo Liao. I live in one-one-zero-four Stone Heaven Circle, Aurora. I also have rental properties in Aurora. I urge the city of Aurora to abort recreational marijuana sales for the sake of our next young generations. I work in a human resource department of an international law firm. I know that if a candidate fails the drug test, the candidate will definitely not get the job offer, no matter how good he is. Allowing recreational marijuana sale will make marijuana much easier accessible to public, including teenagers. If they start to use marijuana, marijuana, it will not only have impact on their health, but also has huge impact on their career. They will fail the drug test and in turn will not find jobs. They will end up on the street. I have two teenager boys. As a father, I'm really worried that if they start to use marijuana, it will not only have bad impact on their health, but also has huge impact on their career. For the future of our kids, for the future of our new generation, I urge the city council to opt-out. Thank you.
Next in row five.
Hello, my name is Javier Gonzalez. I live on seven-twenty King's Way Court in Aurora. Probably the more foremost authority on this subject here in Aurora. Back in the seventies, I would bring two hundred pounds a week into the city. There was four of us, and we all brought that amount. I'm the only one that's left to come and tell you the ravages of this drug. I'm very passionate about it. You know? And it's as simple as throwing the seeds off your back porch. Some of the best stuff was planted by accident. Okay? You're not going to make any money. Why buy it when you can grow it for free and better? Okay? It's, I did all the drugs, heroin, cocaine, everything, acid, everything. I was a drug addict, but my drug of choice was marijuana. I would tell them, "You guys take the coke, I just want the marijuana." That was my, and I had a heck of a time quitting. Really, it was devastating how much it had a grip on me. We used to, and they talk about marijuana back in the day. Well, back in the day, I had to roll up my marijuana, and I had to put the TV on what was I going to watch, because I didn't want to get all high and not be able to turn off the TV, because I didn't want to watch Bozo Circus. I know what I'm talking about. This is devastating. I've seen too many of my friends, a good portion are dead because of this. You're not going to make any money. You're delusioned if you think you are. I'm telling you from facts. I've lived it, I've walked it. And I'm an ordained minister here in Aurora. I'm a small businessman. And I deal with this stuff every day. You know? But anyways, I'm talking about, I've been off this stuff for forty years. Forty years. But I've watched it. I've been observed it the whole time, because that was my choice. I've never seen one thing good come out of using marijuana, not one. But I could name you hundreds, maybe thousands of bad things. Not one. And I challenge anybody other than maybe the medical part of it, but people are going to check But people are gonna check out of society. They're not gonna want to work. The only, the only accident I was ever in was because I was high on pot. And I could have avoided it, but because I was high, I was, and, and I didn't, I didn't take off, I didn't step on the accelerator to get out of her way. It's, it's devastating, I urge you. You know? Uh, don't fool yourselves about this. You know? And, and you're delusional if you think you're gonna make money off of it. Because you can make it for pennies. Once you, once you open the floodgates, hey, just buy a high time magazine, they'll tell you how to grow it for free and better. So I'm, I'm urging you, please, don't do it, don't do it. I've been in too long, I, I know the answers. You know, and, and there is a way. And, and the, the way is Jesus, it's a person. And I'm here to testify for that.
Anybody else in row five? Okay, let's go to this side on row six.
Dear council member and dear committee members and mayor, my name is Roger Wu. Uh, I live in ten ninety nine Stockton Court, Aurora. First of all, I would like to thank that gentleman who is a very brave man. It's a very touching story. I think he told his own story. And now it's, it's your turn to make a wise decision. And I also appreciate the opinion that, uh, the other gentleman talks about how marijuana, today's marijuana, how strong. And it is different. And due to different, based on a lot of marketing companies, and they sell these things, the stores that sell these things, they can make it very attractive to young people. And now, we really need to think, a lot of people talk about revenues, tax dollars. Several people already, uh, bring in the, brought a lot of data. Do we really think it will increase our, our tax? How much cost we have to pay in order to earn these tax dollars? And what about the social cost, like accidents or whatever? And a lot of troubles because of that? And do we really ignore the health issues relate to this? Now, we know, long, long time ago, those big tobacco companies, they say cigarettes is fine, has no health issue. And how many years? And after lawsuits, after lawsuits, and people died. And eventually, they put the sign, cigarettes can cause cancer. How many times we have to repeat this story in this country? And last time, uh, several, I guess several probably weeks ago, people talked about e-cigarettes. And now we all know, many people have died, damaged due to the learn and died of these. So when these things happening, people always say, okay, you know, we can earn dollars, we can earn tax monies. And a lot of interest, interest groups, they like that. So another point, I live in Aurora for more than eighteen years. So I love the city, it's, it's a beautiful community. And we all know, when you own a home, you, you say location, location and location. Ask each one of us, do we want a store open next to my house? Do we want that? I guess I really hope every one of us make a wise decision, not driven by the interest group, not by the tax dollar. It's still questionable, but priority, what is our priority of the city? Is the reputation, the health, the wealth of the citizen, or what else? I urge you to opt out. Thank you.
Next in row six. Anybody else on this side of the room?
Um, my name is Qin He. I live at one zero three one Corland Place, Aurora, Illinois, for fifteen years. Um, I have two daughters go to Metier High School. So what happened is, um, we have a larger amount international community in Aurora. The reason why I bought house here because of good education school system. I just talked to a few investor yesterday. They want to bring their kids to Aurora to go to Calvary Church, to go to two, four school district. And we also have a shopping mall on the fifty nine for Chinese, um, business. And I just want to see, here is, um, we have a young people from China come here to do, to build relationship with young people in Aurora, to be able to bridge in the, the direct trade between both countries. If we will bring the marijuana legal in the city, which could diminish the possibility for the, all the opportunities. The reason why is, you can see a lot of international people here, they don't like marijuana. And I have some tenant smell, uh, smoke marijuana. I can smell the marijuana all the time. I told him, you know, that's okay, I understand why you're smoking marijuana. But you're gonna understand, not everybody want to smell the, uh, marijuana. Every time you go to the bus stop, every time you go to the train station. This, I just feel bad, I just simply feel bad when I smell the marijuana. So this is, um, I want to say is, school system is one of the most wonderful things in Aurora. And if the school system, you know, city allowed to doing this, I mean, how could the parents want their kids living in this neighborhood? Especially from the international community. Okay, that's all I want to say today.
Thank you. Next in row six.
Good evening, my, my name is Johnago. My address is eleven ten Cedar Street, Glendale Heights, Illinois. My background is a, I'm a medical professional. I currently decided to go back to school because of this new upcoming of recreational cannabis and also medical cannabis as well. I'm going back to school to hopefully get into some type of research program to provide more research and data on the uses of marijuana and its benefits. First and foremost, thank you for your time and giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak. I would like to start off by saying that I do support opting in. One of the benefits of opting in is that this whole phase is for social equity. And the main component is that is to provide economic opportunities and add on for, for those affected by petty cannabis offenses, but also for the city of Aurora as well. In doing so, how it essentially helps social equity applicants or people that have, that have been convicted in the past of these petty drug crimes is that it allows them an opportunity to, um, essentially learn and get trained from the tax revenue that's brought in by that. And as well as gives them an opportunity as well to get employment. Also with that, studies show that the average dispensary does, uh, currently bring in right around five hundred thousand dollars worth of taxes. And in the state of California, two thousand and eighteen, a news article published that because majority of California, I believe it was two thirds of the state, decided to ban recreational, uh, sales of cannabis, the illicit market actually doubled what the state's sales were in just two thousand and eighteen alone. So essentially, if you do decide to opt out, it does open more opportunities for the illicit market to thrive. The person at the corner that's selling it now has no competition besides somebody in a neighboring town. For those people that don't like to travel, it's a much easier way to access it. And for health concerns as well, currently, I am aware of a couple of studies that, uh, are ongoing where cannabis is actually being used to help wean, um, people who are addicted to, I guess, stronger opioids like heroin, fentanyl or oxycontin, to help wean them off as a rehab type of treatment. And also, uh, to add to that, I highly recommend that we opt in and thank you for your time.
I think that is the end of, I believe, row six, so row seven. Or go ahead.
Um, good, oh, sorry, sorry, fall off. So good evening, dear councilman, councilwoman. Uh, my name is Lan Xiao. I live in twenty five twenty Joyce Lane, Naperville. But since we have several rental properties, so we're the landlord of this Aurora. And first, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to voice our opinion out. And I really appreciate, uh, all of you just coming here and serve us. I definitely respect the gentleman right sitting in front of me. I do trust your sincerity, I trust everyone here try to do the best for the Aurora people. So also, I respect the people who as a leader, because in my philosophy, I think a true leader is out of love, they want to serve people. So that's also, I respected the old man, the councilman has, uh, standing here and so last seeing his opinion here. I come from Naperville and I also attended Naperville, uh, the same meeting. And there are so many people, they voiced their opinion, like the doctors, the detectives, and the retired policemen, the educators, parents. So from all of them, I heard the same voice opt out. They're not seeking their own good, they're seeking for their, their kids. And one detective, he has so many experiences with the marijuana, who has a really bad impact on those people who have, who has helped. Also, I really respect the gentleman who was so brave enough, using his life experiences here to show what is right, what is wrong. So I think here, everyone has already have some kind of a knowing what is right, what's wrong. I also respect the gentleman come here to see the research. I agree, however, it's still research. So why we risk, take the risk now to opt in, to let some people seems like the rat of the cancer? So if it's do research, let's be conservative, let you be protect the people, protect kids. And it is research, let research run another ten years or twenty years, then I can make the decision. And I want to use to end my talk, I want to use one Bible scripture. I have the right to do anything, you see, but not everything is beneficial. I have the right to do anything, but not everything is constructive. No one should seek their own good, but good of others. Do we really think to allow this recreational marijuana is constructive? By hearing so many opinions, also so many testimonies. So I trust, I put my trust in all of you. I think out of love, you're going to make the right decision. Thank you.
Anyone else in row six?
Dear city council, my name is Yan Burkhead. I live in four eight five Village Green Road in Naperville. I'm a real estate investor, broker and a financial planner, who has lived, worked in the area for last ten years. I keep an office at the Fox Valley Mall Executive Office Center and bring a lot of Chinese real estate investor to the city Aurora. Today, I'm here to urge you to opt out. I meet, uh, Mayor Richard at the reception party for the Chinese, uh, for the seventies anniversary of the founding of the Pupils Republic of China and talked about recreational marijuana. Here is in the U S, they have tremendous freedom, but we must balance those freedom with a, with a maintain health area to live and work and keep our property's values high. Yes, I do care about Aurora's revenue, just like everyone here, but not need revenue from recreational marijuana. The reg, uh, the revenue from the city investment policy should, should attract the pupil to live in Aurora and attract the investor to Aurora as Andy Ni, who invest the Pacific Square at, uh, New York Street. I remember one years ago, I went to Columbia Street to review a property. A police officer stopped me. Surprised, I asked a police officer, what, I did anything wrong? He answered me, there was nothing wrong, he only asked me where I was go. After I told him, I'm going to Columbia Street to see a property and he taught me, be careful. Why? Because of the drugs and shooting in that neighborhood. Those things reduce the value of the house in Aurora and stop highly educated pupil and investor from live in there. The recreational marijuana could do that also. Recreational marijuana sales in Aurora may bring some revenue, but could increase enforcement cost to maintain social stability. Please opt out. Thank you.
Sure, I think you were next.
Good evening, my name is Adam Gary Junior. I live at two hundred South Glenwood Place in Aurora, Illinois, and I've lived there my whole life. I just want to say that cannabis will be purchased today on this block without your consent. And it's gonna be purchased by someone who's selling it from the black market. People die trying to buy weed, people die trying to sell cannabis every day. So if people are buying it, why not, you know, have a grip on it? So the black market will suffer a great loss from people who do not want to rely on illegal transactions, which is literally everyone. Nobody wants to meet a drug dealer on the corner. Nobody wants to buy it illegally. The city can regulate it, authorize it and allow the distribution and sale of it at a higher level that will allow safety among residents in the city of Aurora and ultimately with people that are consuming it on a, you know, on a regular basis that are purchasing it from places that are not safe. I can assure you that the people who are buying cannabis are gonna continue buying you, whether you authorize the sale of it or not. I request that you vote to opt in to allow the safe sale of recreational cannabis. Thank you.
Shannon Buckley, uh, three four five South Evans Lawn, Aurora. I'm here before you today to voice my support to opt in the sale and taxation of recreational marijuana. I believe the economic opportunities in the commercial sale within the city limits would be a great benefit to our city. That's been desperately trying to rebuild itself over the last twenty or so years. Um, I'm a lifelong resident, I've lived here thirty-three years. I'm, you know, I've, growing up in Aurora, I've always known it's had a reputation for being quote unquote rough, to put it nicely. I'm going to NIU, I would tell people I was from Aurora. And I got a sense that people felt bad for me. I never felt bad for myself. I love my city, I feel a great sense of pride. I love it because it's diverse. I, my husband, when we were looking to buy a house, he wanted to look somewhere like Geneva, St. Charles, he grew up in Geneva. And I fought tooth and nail to stay in Aurora because maybe it's the scrappiness of me. And I fought tooth and nail to stay in Aurora, because maybe it's the scrappiness of me, I don't know, but I wanted to stay in the city. And I won. So for as long as I can remember, Aurora has always competed with all the surrounding cities, Naperville, St. Charles, Geneva, Batavia, and everyone has looked down on us. And I want to see the city thrive. I have seen the efforts of the city council, the efforts of the recent mayor. I have seen the efforts that they have put into the city, and bringing in private investors, and, you know, getting grants, and putting that money into the city and building it up, and what it has become, and there's so much potential there. And that sales revenue, which I recommend three percent, would be so beneficial, not just to building the infrastructure in downtown, but to put into other communities within the city. Put it into, you know, the communities that have been hurt by the drug war. Put it into those communities. Give it to the schools. I mean, there's so many things you could do with that revenue that could benefit the communities that have been hurt by these policies. So once again, I'm asking for you to opt in to this proposal and to tax and sell the recreational marijuana. Thank you.
Next.
My name is Ed Harrison. I reside at ten-fourteen Cypress Drive in Aurora. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but sitting here, I realized that I thought maybe I had walked into a screening of Reefer Madness, which we used to see back in the fifties and sixties and forties. Marijuana is here. I mean, it's been here. It's always going to be here. It's finally been legalized, and yes, there's probably some cons about it, but I truly believe that the city would, it would behoove the city to make it legal here, and to add a tax to it, and make that tax the minimum, or maximum, I'm sorry, of three percent. Those tax revenues could do a lot of good for the city, and I think that's what should do. That's it.
Anyone else in row six? We'll begin over on your left side at row seven.
My name's Yan Sun. People call me Sherry. I live in two-five-five Den Haven Court, Aurora. I am a wife, a mom, and my family have been living here for almost twenty years. People always saying Chinese are really good at math, and I just make math very simple tonight, because I didn't plan to talk about statistics. One gentleman from Glendale High, who was working the medical field, just mentioned that unlisted market sales will go up if we don't get this passed. But actually, the gentleman earlier, they're saying, using the example of Canada, saying the opposite. The fact says opposite, because the so-called legal stores, the price cannot compete with the black market. The black market will go up either way. And also get the math straight here. The majority sells money go to the company, but the city of Aurora and taxpayer, we are paying the cost. We are recovering the damage. Okay, today, I want to share with you some personal stories. I have been helping my friends doing counseling, and currently, in the past few months, I have been counseling a couple, with the husband has drug additions. And the husband started with marijuana, now cocaine. And the wife, I talked to the wife this afternoon, because I want to get her input, what I should say tonight. She say her husband, in the beginning, she tell me some education, like marijuana have two ingredients, you guys all know, CBD and THC. THC make you high. The ingredients of THC is increasing right now. And when you hook up with marijuana, you looking for the next level of excitement. That's why people get stuck with some other harder, stronger drug like heroin, like cocaine. So studies saying ninety percent of hard drugs like cocaine, heroin, start with marijuana. That's exactly what happened in her situation, and I have her approval to share their story tonight. And drug addition really put them, for this young couple, into financial distress. And they have been snowballing financial bills and debts. Drug dealer calling them as well, and they are paying personal debt, they don't have mortgage, student debt, and they're borrowing money. And that's not the saddest part. The saddest part is drug addition make shattered their marriage. And the husband, when he's at work in the daytime, when he's not smoking, he told me, he called me, or he called my husband, his nerves is in fire. He cannot focus. When he drive, his wife told me, "Sherry, I don't want to get into his car." I say, "Why?" "Because I don't want to die." A people who's on a drug temptation, she's not even doing a drug. If he on the behind the wheel, he may kill people. He may kill himself. Also, they are distrust, they are disrespect, they are anger, they are, they are broken relationship happening in this young family. And when the husband longing for the drug, he becomes so easy to get irritated and anger, and physical abuse is not far away. Whenever we talk, I worry, I pray, keep her safe, keep him safe, because when they are both emotional, who knows what's going to happen? And they are, they are willing to share their struggle tonight, because them, and me, and many people here, many people out there, we don't want this happen to any person, any family, any friend, anyone in the street. And my friends, they have a long battle. They are fighting right now. They are still in the darkest point in the tunnel, because creating a drug takes money, time, it's hard to coordinate, going to rehab. Rehab for him is really difficult place to go, and he has a job to keep, to pay the bill. And we are committed, maybe we can spend years for this couple, to build them up, to get them out of the desert. So their story, she also told me, Sherry, their story is not alone. Their story is typical. And it takes a lot of social resource to heal, to rebuild a person, a family, whoever involved with drug addition. Can somebody here tonight imagine what if the drug just becomes so readily available next door, next to school? What to one more person, to one more family? How many years of our effort, we're going to be only for one person? And let alone say the damage will be translate, transform to the next generation, to the neighbors. But we are not giving up for them, even though the threat of the voice is on the air. They are maybe thinking, signing by proxy. We are not giving up on this couple because our Christian faith. That's why we are here tonight. We are fulfilling a duty of a citizen of Aurora, and we hold you and all this then. And we all want opt out. Whenever I drive by the row here, Aurora, there's a sign, city of what? Light. Light stands for what? Hope. So let's be wise, be responsible, never lose heart, never lose hope. And in our dear family of Aurora. Thank you very much.
Next in row seven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Huang. I live in two-eight-three-nine Canarisa Lane, Aurora. So I've been a resident of Aurora for more than seven years. Marijuana is not something new. It has been around for a long time, and it has always been illegal for people to plant and consume. Why does it now become a focal point of our daily conversation? When people start using the marijuana for recreational purpose, does that mean over the years, our body already adjusted and immune to the chemical introduced by the drug? Or does it mean we already have the technology today to curb the harm it may cause? The answer unknowns. The main reason, as we already heard tonight, is the tax dollar it may collect. I have no opposition to its medical use. However, for the recreational use, I'm not convinced. And I'm sure you already heard so many information from all the speakers, how many damage it may cause. The tax dollar it collect may give the city a short-term financial relief, a few job opportunities, but the cost to contain and fix the damage it may cause is far greater than the benefit it could bring, both financial and the social wise, without mentioning the psychological effect to people. Marijuana-related traffic deaths, crime, hospitalization, marijuana-related bully in campers, safety concern in community, property value going down. All this will jeopardize the city reputation, consume more taxpayers' money, damaging the environment for benign business investment, and lower the standard of our value we believed in. This is not just talking. It's already happening in, to Colorado, which is the first state legalized recreational marijuana. Therefore, for all this reason, I would strongly urge you to opt out recreational marijuana in our city of Aurora. It could only benefit the weed industry, but hurt our community. Our people is not ready for this drug currently, physically and mentally. And here we have all the signature from the community we collected. Oh, sorry. It has more than one hundred signature we collected is going to vote to opt out marijuana, recreational marijuana for the city of Aurora. So thank you for your attention.
I might state for the record that several of you have brought items up to be submitted to the record, and everything we've received tonight will be attached to the record. Next in row seven.
Hi, my name is Winnie May, from eighteen-seventy-nine Diamond Creek Lane, Aurora. About twenty years ago, my husband and I were very excited about looking for a new home in the U.S. And we were looking in Naperville. For the longest time, we couldn't find a house. So finally, the realtor said to us, "Well, if you don't mind an Aurora address, I'll take you to Aurora." So I didn't know there was such a stigma attached to living in Aurora. But we bought a house in Aurora anyway, and we do like our community. So I know Aurora currently has hired a redevelopment company to rejuvenate our city. We say we have so much potential, and someone just mentioned the mayor having ice cream in the new ice cream store in the downtown area. So I also look at our neighbor, Naperville, who hired, which hired a redevelopment company about a couple of decades ago, and we have seen their prosperity in Naperville. And they have prospered without revenue from legalized drug dollars. So we definitely want Aurora to prosper. I am one of its citizens. And but we want, and if we want God to bless Aurora, we have to do what's right in God's eyes. It will not come with the suffering and pain of people from the ravages of marijuana. So the very real, long-term human costs have already been presented to you. I urge you to vote with good conscience to opt out. Thank you.
Next in row seven.
Respectable mayor and commissioners, thank you giving me the opportunity. I'm Mei Wu, residing in two-six-six-six Yorkshire Lane, Lyon. Why I come all the way from Lyon to here? Because Aurora is special to me. My daughter used to dance in a dancing school, Alheli. Every year, Christmas time, they perform at Paramount. Beautiful theater. I love it. It's such a great memory. Now she's in college. I still have this beautiful, sweet memory for that. I like Aurora. This is a beautiful place, historical place. Now today, I want you to really, you are all decision makers. Make a decision that responsible, consider public health, consider community safety first as a priority. As previous speaker already said, the first thing I'd like to mention that is the intensity of THC and the compounding effect of THC and alcohol. THC is the main ingredient of marijuana. And THC, as we all know, in nineteen-sixties, two to four percent is typical. Now it's up to eighty, ninety percent on the market. That's twenty to forty-fold increase. And the worst part is when THC is taken with alcohol, it enhances alcohol absorption. That means more alcohol can get into your body faster. The green outer effect is obvious. It's already recorded in medical journal. So what's the result? Result of this combination of drug interaction is more traffic accident, fatal accident, and a community health safety issue. As recorded in Colorado in past six years, two-thirds of fatal traffic accident related to marijuana were taken along with alcohol altogether. So this is a very significant fact. Please note it. Alcohol impair your motor skills, and THC impair your brain function and judgment. Put together, it's tragic. And a key reality for the THC is the testing method. Unlike alcohol, there is a quick method, breathing method, on the spot, you can breathe out and test the level of alcohol. For THC, there is no onsite quick method developed yet. I'm a scientist by training. The methodology is right now extremely difficult, time-consuming. Took few days, body fluid, testing lab, and then come back. That would introduce tremendous difficulty for law enforcement to enforce any regulation policies onsite. Please think about this. Finally, I'd like to mention that CDC announces last week that there are eight hundred confirmed vaping cases caused lung disease and lung damage. Twelve deaths in current. Among these, the vaping two-product, e-cigarette and marijuana. And State of Massachusetts also announced a four-month ban on any vaping product, all of them, that included marijuana. Why is it? Think about it. Once the genie out of a bottle, you can never take it back. Please, decision makers, Aurora's future, safety, health is on your hands. Please reconsider. Opt out. Thank you.
Next in row seven. Anybody else in row seven? We'll go to row eight on this side. Please come forward. We'll go to row eight on this side. Please come forward.
Fellow citizens, my name is Raymond Leaf. I live at 2769 Borkshire. And my wife and I retired here 10 years ago. I've, I came tonight because we heard from our aldermen, we received a postcard from him. I came to learn. And it's the second postcard we received from him. And as I was listening to the talks tonight, one thing that came up over and over again was about taxes and supposedly gain of taxes. And it brought to mind a previous postcard that we received from our alderman about the moving of the gambling casino, that they're going to move into our neighborhood over here on Farnsworth Road. They bought, the city has spent $7.5 million to buy the motels over there. And now they want to borrow $100 million to move the casino there. And as Judge said in his postcard, the casino has $450 million of their own to spend. But they want to use the taxes of Aurora to pay for the moving of the casinos. I see a disconnect. And we're talking about lives of people and terrible devastation that we've heard of. It can, it does take place in the use of marijuana. And money is a big deal. Taxes is a big deal. It seems to me somehow we've got our values mixed up here. Are we going to be raising money from marijuana to pay for the moving of a casino? Thank you.
Next in row eight, going across row eight.
Hello, my name is Mariah Loper, Tom Hugtrow Oswego. I'd just like to share a story that happened to me a few years ago. I was about 15 years old, and I decided to buy marijuana off the streets with one of my friends in California, where I'm from. We smoked it, and it just so happened to be laced with PCP. Afterwards, we soon realized that it was laced, and our experience was very traumatizing and scary for the both of us. She forgot how to breathe at one point. I was imagining things. And the fact that California legalized recreational marijuana and has dispensaries just around the corner made it so much more easy for us to access safe usage of marijuana. I am currently 21 years old, and since I turned 21 and was able to buy marijuana legally in California, I have not had any bad experiences with it. In fact, it not only is not laced with PCP, but it has helped me with my mental disorders and disabilities, my physical disabilities. I have PTSD, for example, and it stops me from having flashbacks from the traumas I've been through. It's something that has helped me through so many things in life that has even been able to help me be able to socialize, be able to help me feel more okay with myself because I'm not so anxious all the time. I'm not scared. I am able to calm down, breathe for a second. And if I even just ingest the oil, the, maybe even just rub a little bit on my shoulder where I have nerve damage or muscle tissue damage, I'm able to move it so much better and be able to function better as just a human being all on my own. I can finally go out in public and be normal instead of being in pain all the time and having to restrict myself from playing baseball with my friends, swimming like a normal teen would like to swim or a normal kid would like to swim with their friends. I'm a big water person. I love the water. And when I was in high school, I loved to play water polo. And I had hurt my shoulder back then, and I had to stop playing it. But now I can go back to playing water polo. I can go back to swimming. I can go back to playing baseball and continue to have a normal life, just like everybody else. I no longer have to feel so much pain just walking around in my daily life. I say opt in to the dispensaries here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, John Frost from 992 North Ohio Street. I support Aurora opting in for recreational marijuana sales. We've heard kind of a lot of misinformation here today, but also some information, misinformation that actually supports opting in for marijuana sales. You know, there's simple things like the attribution of marijuana, driving, or driving deaths in marijuana-related causes in Colorado. However, we know that those tests can be run with marijuana that's been in people's systems for up to 30 days from that time. So those figures are a little twisted. And I think it's important to recognize that, as some other people have brought up, we're almost in an island right now. Naperville has voted to not allow marijuana sales. Oswego is talking about it. Plainfield is talking about not allowing it. And what that does is it causes people to have to drive further if they want to get marijuana. If you're worried about people driving high, you know, they will be driving further. And people from Aurora will be going to those places to get marijuana, you know, beyond Oswego, Plainfield, Naperville, where they can get it. It's been brought up that there won't be any money made from this. I'm not necessarily in favor of a full 3% tax. I think the 2% is very reasonable. And I think it's important to point out that there's been over $1 billion in revenue generated in Colorado since its legalization there. That's $1 billion, billion with a B. Things have been brought up about kids and marketing to kids. We know that we will not be able to market marijuana to kids. We know that, you know, we've come up, I like the proposal from the city to not allow depictions of people using marijuana or the plants or paraphernalia on images outside of recreational shops. I think kids should not use marijuana. And I think by legalizing it, you're actually preventing kids from using it. I grew up in St. Charles, and there, I, when I was in high school, I could not find a single person to get alcohol. I wanted to have a party one time. Nobody could get any alcohol. Alcohol was legal, and it was sold to 21-year-olds in stores. If I wanted to, I could contact probably 50 people who could get marijuana. I didn't want to, but I could easily do that. Because of that availability of marijuana, the gateway drug aspect of marijuana is not due to marijuana. It's due to contact with people who are doing illegal sales of illicit substances, who have low morals and low standards. Those, that contact with someone who's willing to sell marijuana allows you that contact for someone who's willing to sell cocaine or heroin or any of those other things. In volunteering in the Habitat for Humanity and other places, nearly one ubiquitous fact existed between people that I asked, "How did you get into using opiates or other things?" There was a few cases of addiction based on pill usage, you know, doctor's prescriptions and things getting out of control. But nearly every other case was based on the fact that because marijuana is legal, they were in contact with a person who could get them other illegal substances. If we sell it in stores, if, you know, it's regulated, we understand it, we can control it, and they don't have that access. In regards to potency, this is actually a serious problem. The problem is that marijuana is available. Marijuana is, can be bought on the black market easily. And come January 1st, it'll be able to be purchased in Illinois. If you do not know the potency, you do not know what you're getting. If you go to a store, from what I've seen, there's labeling and testing that shows the percentage of marijuana that's contained in different products, as well as, you know, allowing you to understand if you have a non-qualified medical need, you can purchase marijuana that fits a specific circumstance that you have to, like some people mentioned, skin creams and things like that that can help them, but also different types of marijuana that can help them without getting them high. And my biggest point in wanting to opt in to recreational marijuana sales goes back to the fact that prohibition in large areas, and especially in smaller areas, surrounded by, so if you're in an island of prohibition, what happens is it feeds the black market. It allows people to, to, you know, allows gangs to sell marijuana. It allows those interactions with people who do other drugs, who do other illegal things. It promotes violence between people in an unregulated sale situation. And it generally festers illegal action in itself, the simple existence is there. So we're not, we will not be able to keep marijuana away from our kids, from them understanding that it exists, that it is a thing. We need to educate them by selling marijuana recreationally. We can fund schools to do that. We can continue to do that education in schools, and we can know when they're being exposed to it, when we need to tell them what it is, and explain that it's dangerous to use it as they're young. And maybe even say that it's dangerous to use it when they're adults. But to be able to control that situation and control their exposure from a perspective of putting it in the hands of regulation and the city's ability to drive how kids get exposed to marijuana and its ubiquitous presence in society. So please opt in to selling marijuana recreationally in Aurora. Thank you.
Anybody else in row eight?
Laura Swanson, 2366 Legacy Drive. The Medical Cannabis Pilot Program Act set a distance for cultivation site to be 2,500 feet. Having listened to your presentation and the zoning of 500 feet, I don't see why that's necessary. Why not do what is recommended versus pushing the envelope and going further into as close as we can get to a school or a daycare? That's where I have a problem. I'm not opposed to people choosing to smoke marijuana, whether it's for medical instances or for recreation, as long as they're adults. Somebody used the example of a 15-year-old. I hope that 15-year-olds can't walk into a store here. I don't know if one can walk in in California at 15. I didn't realize that the age was that young there. And then I live near the Molitor site, which is the cultivation site. And back in 2015, they did not get the license, and they've been fighting with another site in Zion. It is my understanding they are currently growing marijuana in there. And they do not have a license to do that. And this is according to an article that just came out from the Tribune over the weekend. And the city of Aurora has been funding for the past two years a lawsuit enjoined with this site in Molitor. I can't remember the name of the company that's running the site. So our taxpayer dollars, anybody in here, were enjoined and helping with those legal costs for that site currently. So that I have an issue with. So I don't have confidence in the city of Aurora to make good choices in where to place these dispensaries or a cultivation site. The current one is less than 2,500 feet. And making your own assessments at 500 feet makes sense. You can put it anywhere you want. We have a high school down the street. We have residential area. We have apartments. We have homes. And to learn that they're currently growing without a license, it's still a felony. Somebody mentioned the level of the federal offense that it is. And I do believe that that's incorrect to be doing that. So I want to bring that to your attention. I know you don't make the decisions, but who's making the decisions behind the scenes without proper authorization to be growing without a license? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in row eight?
A member of City of Council. My name is Li Bin Zhang. I'm a Aurora resident for 20 years. I live in 3869 Sherwood, Aurora. I'm come here and stand here. I just want to express my point. To build a better community, we need to say no to retail sale of recreational marijuana in Aurora. To keep our city strong, health, and safe, we should say no to drop profit. I, personally, I, since I moved into Aurora, I really love this city. So that's why I live in there. I'm an original homeowner and I've lived in there for 20 years. I love the environment, the education, the Good School District, and I love the shopping, the Aurora Outlet Mall. So there's a lot of good facility and service. And a very good community area and the service. So I know, and based through my last 20 years' experience, I see City of Aurora make a lot of efforts to try to strive to make Aurora a better place to live in. So I see there's so many people move their home to Aurora. And since 19, I moved in 1999, till this year is exactly 20 years. If count the number of the residents, there's a 40%, 40% of population increase. So we know that Aurora is a better place to live in. And I'm happy about I living here and I choose Aurora as my hometown. But at this point of time, I come here, I want to say, we want to say no to marijuana because marijuana is not, it's just a regular things you can use and without any effect. The actually, using marijuana, there's a lot of, cause a lot of negative and long-term effect and the problem. Through the research and starting the BUDU and New Zealand and other research, they already show they already show the use of marijuana will lower brain power. They affect the brain development. The IQ can decline eight point, the score. And even though you stopped using the marijuana, you cannot go back. So, and also it inspire your memory. Using the marijuana affect the memory, learning concentration and attention, difficulty with critical thinking and the problem solving. And also the using marijuana lead to worse education. And based on the studying for the student who is using and consume the marijuana has more link to more not finish the high school, more high rate not finish the high school and college. So, and also using marijuana, we already, many people already mentioned about this, they causing the driving dangerous. They experience dangerous effect. The slow reaction decrease coordination and the difficult reaction signal and the sound. That's easy to cause the accident for that. And if a person or when the prevalent and during the prevalent using the marijuana, that will affect the baby development. The increase, the risk of the baby's brain and the behaviors. So you think about, this is actually, it's very, very dangerous to using marijuana. But there's a survey, it's a monitoring future survey. The survey shows the more high, high number of the student, they thought about the less risk. They don't think the taking or using marijuana is a high risk. They don't think the risk. They thought it's very normal. Because one of the reason is the legalization of the marijuana in so many states is costless. And if the legal say this is legally, and we say, no, this is so much wrong, but why do this? And so actually the fact is, the many young people, they don't think it's risk, but the action is risk. So this is actually make things is more urgent, more dangerous. Make our feel like everything is normal. When we open the store, people is student and anyone is re, easily to reach marijuana store. It's so easy because that is my neighborhood in my next, next street, right? But at the same time, there's so many horrible and dangerous the risk is actually taking. I feel very touched. The gentleman is just talk about. He using his life experience, life testimony to say thousands of bad things about the marijuana. That is his life experience. For us, we did not use it, but we still, we know. We see that something wrong or something, what is wrong and what is right. So we come to a situation is the very risk of the marijuana and make people feel, or especially student, they feel no risk, everything's good. If this is things right, what we want to, a city to know for, we want a city to be a healthy, strong, and with good education. Not just say to make the revenue and to pay the price, take the risk. And once we want to change and things, the community environment is different and that is too late. So come here, I want to say no. No, the retail sale of the recreational marijuana in Aurora. Please take up out. And thank you for make decision, make a wise decision. Thank you.
Anybody else in row eight there? We'll move to row nine. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Feng Ganto, two-three-zero-two Hudson Circle Aurora. I have three kids, three boy. One elementary school, another high school, another one is the college. I struggle oppose recreation marijuana store only one reason. Lead our kids not into temptation. For protect our children, I choice opt-out. Thank you.
Next in row nine. Anybody else in row nine?
Hi everyone, my name is Kai Han. I'm the homeowner of eighteen fifty-five Tox Drive, Unit three zero oh eight. I just went make a street, I think. It make no sense financially to have this business in our city. I know somebody will make, will make money, but not the government, not the city. To have more revenue from this, that means more people are consuming, are using marijuana. And more opportunity of children may involved. If marijuana dispensary are legalized in our city, it will give our children a wrong message. Marijuana is okay. It's not such a addictive drug. It is a privilege only for the adult. It would be so cool to try something adult currently use. Actually, according to a recent research data in Colorado, quote, the percentage of, oh, this not, the percentage of the twelve to seventeen-year-old using marijuana is higher in every legal marijuana state than the national average. We don't mind other cities too, we just need to do a regulation. Make a regulation for kids for their future. Once, if we opt out today, we still have opportunity in the future to opt-in if it is really good. But today, I think it's too rush to make a decision for today because Illinois only legalize it in June, I remember. For other states, they legalize this marijuana. Recreation marijuana usually it takes about sixteen months. But for us, it's only like three months left. It's too rush to make a decision. We need to do more research as the data show if it's worth it to have this business, to bring this business into our city. Thank you for attention.
Anybody else in row nine?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Zhao Shenggao. I live at forty-one thirty-eight Bethlehem Road, City of Aurora. Tonight, I came here just want to vote opt-out because I searched internet and a lot of information saw that marijuana is a kind of drug which does great damage both physically and mentally to the human body. So I hear several people mentioned the revenue. So although marijuana, legalizing recreational marijuana can bring some maybe revenue, but the cost is too high to make a profit or to benefit, really benefit our city, our community because it cast trouble, cast more problem. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Xu Junfa. I'm Aurora citizen. I live at two-zero-four-nine Foxdale Drive for seventeen years now. I have two children. I'm writing to you to encourage you to opt-out regarding retail recreational marijuana sales in Aurora. Please protect the reputation of our city and the family that we love. Medical marijuana is available here in Illinois. If you have chronic pain or conditions that need marijuana, go to doctor. Go get from medical THC dispensary. We are discussing recreational marijuana, not medical marijuana. There's distinct between the two, so the, please do not confuse. Public health, concentration of THC. THC damage your brain. The term marijuana plant or cannabis plant often misuse of THC. The key psychoactive ingredient. THC damage your brain, especially in teens and the teenage and the children who will be the source, next source to our, to move our economy to a higher level. The country, the concentration level of marijuana today has changed from that in nineteen sixty. Substantially, back in nineteen sixty, two to four percent marijuana were typical. Today, the level increased three to four fold to eight to twelve percent due to plant, plant breeding technology. Newer, newer extracted form can contain forty to ninety percent active ingredient. This is not marijuana old folks in nineteen sixty know anymore. It's highly concentrated. Public safety. THC may not immediately kill you, but you can make non-term damage and make alcohol more lethal because add psychoactive effect. Colorado statistics shown that two-third of people use marijuana was used together with alcohol or other drugs. It is known that THC can enhance absorption of alcohol. They made the compounding effect more dangerous. Impact of adding one more drug to market is not simply addictive, addictive effect on public health and safety. It is a multiplied detriment, detrimental effect. Allowing recreational marijuana use will cause more emergency room visit, more traffic death due to multiple substance misuse. As evidence in Colorado, more traffic accidents mean more innocent lives to be taken away. Make our community and surrounding nice safe. Opt-out please. Marijuana is a federal law drug, federal illegal drug. Many companies do drug screening during hiring, hiring process. If candidate fails drug test, applicant is automatically rejected. If employee cut performing duties under drug influence, they are subject to termination. Since marijuana stays in body for a long time, if more people have easier access to it, more people would have a hard time to find a job or keep their jobs. October seven, two thousand sixteen at nine P M, a precious, a precious nine-years-old girl Katie was on her way back from her rehearsal. She was killed by someone smoked marijuana and drunk and drive. He, she ended, he ended up in prison for thirteen years. But the innocent little girl with her beautiful life just about to start and to explore, she lost her life. As a mother of two children, I can imagine the pain, the grief of Katie's family. We have many parents, all the men, all the women here. Can you imagine if this happened to you, your family, your loved ones? Potential little precious, precious Katie could become a scientist or engineering, or engineer, a source of our economy. Use her knowledge to serve our society, but marijuana ended her life unfairly. At such young stage, can you imagine how many scientists or engineer will be killed in the future if we have easy access to marijuana? Marijuana indeed indirectly decrease or damage our economics, our young generation, our lives. Money can earn and can wait. Our lives cannot. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in row nine?
Hi, my name is Dora Penn. I live in twenty-three thirty Hudson Circle Aurora. Folks have brought the enough information, data to demonstrate the consequence of using marijuana. It's destroying our life, destroying our health, and destroying our family and the community. Here, I just want to share a short story. My best friend's daughter didn't finish school and didn't find a job because of the marijuana using. When she was in high school, her friend in the same class brought her marijuana and then they started using that and they became addicted and lost of control and eventually didn't finish high school. But the worst thing is the families fell apart. A lot of tears, a lot of disappointment and worries. So these girls couldn't find the job they dreamed of. I just don't want to hear more of such stories. Here, I'm urging the city council to support the opt-out. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in row nine? We'll go to row ten.
My name is Bill Gommel, twenty-five fifty-eight Oak Trails Drive, Fifth Ward. You know, we've heard a lot of testimony tonight about the emergency room's going to be impacted. The more marijuana impaired driving, more costs on the police. The marijuana is more potent today. The social costs of using marijuana and the difficulty of finding drug-free employees. Probably all of these are true. The real culprit here is the state who's made it legal to have marijuana. So opting out will not stop marijuana from being consumed legally by the residents of our city. I grew up in a dry county where they didn't sell alcohol because they didn't think it was right for people to drink alcohol. Right down the middle of a community ran the county line road. All the churches were on the county line, on the county side that was dry. All the bars were on the county line that was not dry. On Sundays, when church got out, you could see the cars coming from the parking lots of the church, driving into the parking lots of the bars. The people went to church, but they still went to the bars. Marijuana is going to be used by residents of Aurora whether Aurora is in or out. Our police are going to have to deal with it whether Aurora is in or out. Our emergency rooms are going to deal with it whether Aurora is in or out. People are going to use it because it's legal, just like people use alcohol. And unfortunately, people abuse alcohol and we've heard some tragic results of that. There's probably going to be that with marijuana too, whether or not Aurora is in or out. You need to opt in to get some of the costs offset. Sure, it may not be a windfall for the city, but it's going to be more than if it's opted out. Need to opt in to get some controls. If you're out, you have no controls. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in row ten.
Hello, my name is Anthony Ingram. I live at 847 West Kalina, Aurora, Illinois. I'm a native. West Kalina. I'm a native. I've been born and raised here, forty-one years old. Lived on the east side, now we live on the west side. I've seen Aurora grow. Looks beautiful now. When I was younger, there's more little businesses, there was a gun, there's new businesses coming in. The city looking pretty. I believe you guys should pass it, get more money in, more stuff will grow. The naysayers, I believe they need to do more research. If you guys get the money, put it towards education, educate the older and the younger because obviously, nobody's doing their research good enough. Everybody still reefer madness, drinking and driving. Everybody knows, close to my age, anybody in their forties, they know marijuana stays in your system for thirty days. You can smoke it one time, it's in there for the whole month. That next month, it's not there. So if they're drinking towards the tail end of that month, it's going to show up in their system. So drinking and driving and smoking marijuana, not a combo, but you can't tell if they're still smoking at the same time they did that. So if you guys pass it, use the money wisely, keep building the city, make a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in row ten.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan A. Bucartless. I reside at 407 Parker Avenue in Aurora, Illinois. I have lived here for ten years. I've been a longtime cannabis user and advocate for most of my adult life. I am a father and husband, a hard-working man that holds a full-time job working six days a week, not your typical lazy stoner that movies and media portray. I am excited that in a few short months cannabis will be legal for all adults in our great state of Illinois to legally purchase, possess, and consume. There are millions of cannabis users around the world. We live in a world where alcohol and cigarettes are sold almost anywhere within a five-mile radius of our homes, yet can cause way more problems within our society. Alcohol is also deeply integrated within society, an accepted drug of choice for millions of people, many of which do not see it as a drug. I can also tell you from experience cannabis is a safer substance to use recreationally. I believe the true gateway drug is alcohol. It's the one I was exposed to first, taking a sip of my dad's beer at a family barbecue many years ago. Facts and studies are there. I enjoy using cannabis and yes, I enjoy drinking the occasional beer. It is a person's choice what we put in our bodies. Why should adults who use cannabis be punished and looked down upon in our society? The days of fear-mongering and reefer madness are over, all based on false facts and racial tendencies. People tend to fear what they don't know. Cannabis users need to come out and have our voices heard. We shouldn't have to drive four towns over just to purchase a substance that can help many relax, de-stress, and calm the mind. Yes, cannabis can be abused, so can alcohol, cigarettes, and other things. If Auroraans can't purchase cannabis here, they will just travel to the next town and get it there just to bring it back home to enjoy missing out on tax revenues. Many people can find relief for many ailments with the responsible use of cannabis. Allowing recreational cannabis businesses to operate in Aurora would bring an extra tax revenue, helping our community. The sky is not going to fall, Aurora. Please do the right thing, opt in and allow recreational cannabis businesses to open up shop here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anybody else in row ten?
My name is Anthony Marsico. I'm from Bartlett, Illinois, chairman and members of the Plan Commission. Want to thank you for your patience and diligence during this evening. Also like to point out to everyone who's spoken today that this is a hearing, this is not a hearing on whether to legalize adult-use cannabis. That has already happened. This is a recommending body about the zoning regulation to oversee how adult-use cannabis would be regulated, controlled, and overseen in Aurora. There's been a lot of appeals, a lot of personal opinions that have been displayed today and as a member of the cannabis community, I want to rebut some of those. The first overwhelming one that we've heard today is cannabis as a gateway drug. That is a myth and that has been, that's been proven over and over again that cannabis is not a gateway drug. The National Institute on Drug Abuse has concluded the overwhelming majority of people who use cannabis do not move on to harder substances. And the US Attorney General, Loretta Lynch, has stated that marijuana is not a gateway. And the talk about gateway drugs is mostly in correlation to the opioid crisis in Illinois. When talking about heroin, they're most cases starting with prescription drug problem, then because they need more of that feeling of the prescription drugs, they move on to heroin. There's also been talk of increased access leading to increased use. Something that hasn't been talked about today is a decrease in opioid prescriptions filled in states that have adult-use programs, significant decreases. Illinois has twenty percent higher opioid overdoses than the national average. Another issue that has not been talked about today is Forbes reported that there's been a fifteen percent decline in states with cannabis legislation. So while there may be increased use of cannabis, there's also decrease in more illicit drugs. Someone said today that we should be learning from other states and I've heard Colorado come up several times today and I think that may be the worst analogy to use and we should learn from Colorado. Colorado has over a thousand cannabis licenses. Illinois has done an amazing job and a diligent job on passing legislation with strict testing standards and oversight. Illinois flour and cannabis products are not allowed to have pesticides or fungicides. They're all tested for those as well as microbial. And we're talking about the vaping crisis, most of that has been tied to the substance vitamin E acetate, which there was also a memo put out by IDFPR and Department of Ag that cultivators cannot have these in their vape products. Many of the cultivators and processors in Illinois have also put out public statements saying that they do not use these substances. That is a product of the black market and that's something that Aurora has an ability to combat. We have an opportunity to control the outcome. Cannabis has been legalized, adult use has been legalized, and the ladies and gentlemen here can control the outcome. I want to commend Aurora on making more strict distance requirements than the state. I heard something about not having a stricter requirements, but for dispensing facilities, there are no distance requirements that the state has put in place. City of Aurora is proposing a five-hundred-foot requirement. Also more strict hours of operation for dispensing organizations than the state requirements. I think some of the obvious benefits of opting in, job creation and tax revenue. Lastly, I think something that has been talked about a couple times but really needs to be emphasized is the undeniable fact that minorities have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs. This is something that has been coming up very recently in the news and I think Illinois has also done a great job of making this relevant. In the coming months, there is going to be another round of applications for social equity applicants. And I heard at the beginning of this meeting that Aurora is thinking about capping the number of licenses that are proposed in the city of Aurora. And I would stress that it's very important and it's our responsibility to reserve some of those for the social equity applicants that are coming up in the following year. With respect to zoning, I think we have that opportunity and stress that this body here has the opportunity to control the outcome of what happens in Aurora. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in row ten or in the back of the room? Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken that would like to speak before the commission? Sir, were you sworn in earlier?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Zegang Liang. I live in 1059 Oak Hill Drive, Aurora. People talking about legalizing marijuana and also talking about educating about kids. I think currently, our society also already put a much effort to educate our kids, but you know, still a kid to take the marijuana. So how could we do a better job after the legalization of marijuana? I mean, thinking about the danger of the marijuana to the body, I strongly suggest we, Aurora, City of Aurora, to out down. Thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken that would like to do so? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing and I would like to thank everyone who took the time to provide relevant testimony this evening and I would ask staff to come forward and there's a couple items. I think we had some questions and clarifications. And I tried to write some of these down here, but maybe you can just, the five-hundred-foot distance, if you can clarify that.
The proposal in the text amendment is five-hundred-foot separation from schools to any licensee.
I think the twenty-five hundred was a cultivation center, wasn't it?
That had to do with in the original medical requirements, the medical marijuana requirement. I think Deb, you want to answer that?
The twenty-five hundred feet was with the medical marijuana legislation passed, I believe in 2013. That is not in the new recreational cannabis amendments. So the five-hundred feet is what we came to as an amount. Currently, in our liquor code, it is a hundred feet from school zones in section six-dash-thirteen D, and that's for a hundred feet to grade school, middle school, alternative school or high school. So this is a further distance than what's currently in our liquor code.
Thank you. Then I think there was a discussion about potential lawsuit, but maybe just comment that anybody will have to follow the licenses of the state of Illinois.
Right. The existing medical marijuana cultivation facility at Deal Road does have a state license, so I believe that was granted several years ago.
Age twenty-one or older to purchase marijuana?
Yes, that's a state requirement. No one under, I don't believe anyone under twenty-one can even be in the building.
And then, I don't know, I think the city council will address how the tax revenues will be deployed?
Currently, we just passed a portion on what the tax would be so we could get it into the Illinois Department of Revenue so that if we do opt in, we'd be able to collect the sales tax because it takes about ninety days to process that paperwork. So if January first is the start date and the city decides to opt in, we'd be able to collect the taxes in a timely manner. We're still in discussion on how that money will be dispersed.
Any other questions of staff?
I have one question. So what is the city proposing in terms of the number of dispensaries that will be allowed to operate in Aurora?
The second to the last gentleman said he thought he heard that there was a proposed limitation on the number for dispensaries. We're not proposing that. I'm sure it'll be, the state will only issue a certain amount if a special use is granted by the city, but we are not proposing at this time a limit.
And in addition to what I had explained, the limitation is going to be on arterial ways as he described earlier during the hearing. That is the limitation and the five-hundred feet from the school. So that will limit the areas in the city.
Okay, but there's no distance from a residential area, right?
I'm sorry.
Is there, I know if it's an arterial and it's five-hundred feet with, I think, fifteen-hundred-foot separation between dispensaries, is there any restrictions on proximity to residential areas?
No, there is nothing in the state act and the city is not proposing that. Just the five-hundred-foot to schools, there's a fifteen-hundred-foot separation between dispensaries, that's a state act, and that we're limiting it to special uses within only certain zoning districts and then they have to abut an arterial highway, which is the highest classification highway.
I would like to comment that five-hundred feet is absolutely too close to any school. Let's just bring it right down to where there is no way that I could support anything that's going to be, if you, and you won't find a liquor store within a hundred feet of a school, you certainly won't find one in school district two oh four. Now you may find something, you know, my home, I live in West Marywood area, and I counted in my mind over ten liquor stores within a half a mile of my home. And East Aurora School District 131, we don't have a library branch, we don't have a major food grocery store in our district. There's all kinds of other ways. We got mattress stores, auto parts stores, and restaurants, small restaurants. And so five-hundred feet is absolutely, I will not support anything, fifteen-hundred minimum. And so I didn't expect to have to say anything and I know I may ramble somewhat because I didn't plan on saying a lot about this. But what I will say is, all the talk about revenue, okay, I'll just say this, the toll way was going to go to the schools. The casino, when the casino first opened, we were reconstructing in asphalt in twenty-six lane miles per year with the casino revenue. All of those things have gone down. The state of California, and I'm saying all this because I am ambivalent about the whole situation. The state of California has also put out a report that since they've gone with the legal marijuana dispensaries, that many of them are going out of business because the recreational users are still going to the black market because it's cheaper. They're not interested. The kids on the east side of Aurora are not going to go to that dispensary because they can't afford that. They can't afford it. Am I excited that a fifteen-year-old is not going to have that put on his record and ruin his chance to get into college or to get a job? Absolutely. But I'm not in the business of watching the government get in the business of distributing drugs, selling, making it legal in this town. You talk about what you love? I love Aurora enough that I've been on the east side of Aurora for the last thirty-three I love Aurora enough that I've been on the east side of Aurora for the last 33 years, and I could have lived anywhere that I wanted to live, but I chose to stay when people were fighting and running and just trying to get out, and I stayed, and I fought. And I don't want to see a dispensary anywhere on the east side of Aurora. Well, we'll put it like this. I'll speak for District 131. And I haven't spoken to the people at District 131, to ask them, I'm speaking as a citizen and a taxpayer of District 131. I don't want to see a dispensary over there. And when I brought up the fact that the government is getting involved in this and talking about the taxes and the revenues, no, my community, so all of you that are not African-American, thanks for the help, but I'm gonna speak on behalf of that. My community has, has an economy built on their back, locked up in jail because of marijuana sales, nonviolent crimes, and now the government wants to say, let's open up dispensaries. I don't think so. And when I was at West Aurora in the 70s, what did they do when they wanted quality marijuana? They went to St. Charles, they went to Geneva, they went to Oswego, they went to Yorkville, because that's where they had the good stuff at, so to speak. And so for those of you, I appreciate all the data, but you can, you can make data say anything you'd like to say, whether it's about revenue or whether it's about the effects of, the effects of it. I'll tell you what I can tell you about the effects of marijuana, and I'm not ashamed to say it. I haven't smoked marijuana in three to four decades. But what I can tell you is, when I started, this is the truth, when I started, one thing happened to me. When it came to school, I didn't quite like it as much. I didn't quite care as much, and I was a good student. And I still, because God blessed me with a certain amount of sense, was able to get through it, get through school, got through college, got through all of that. But at the same time, I didn't see it the same way. It was always just do enough, Ray, to get by, and that'll be it. But I came to work every day, so all of you are saying you're not gonna come to work. From the time that, you know, I'm saying when I quit, I still came to work, I worked, I started working at 16, I was smoking and I was working. So don't tell me everybody that smokes is gonna be lazy. That's not necessarily true. Yes, there are slackers, yes, there are burnouts. And so, you know, there's a lot to this, but I'm saying, for me, for East Aurora, I don't want to see a dispensary over there. How about giving us a library branch? How about that? How about doing something that's gonna put something else? If you have one out in 204, great, on 59, if there are dispensing weed out there, I didn't know anything about it, great. Okay? If they want that revenue out there, and I'm not speaking for all of East Aurora, I'm speaking for Ray Hall and how I feel about anything of that sort opening up in District 131. We have enough issues and enough challenges, and 500 feet will get a no vote from me. The city council needs to make that adjustment. I know it's gonna happen, it's going to happen. No matter how I vote, or how anybody else votes, there's gonna be some dispensaries here, but we really need to consider that. 500 feet within a school, really? You know, the next question I would ask is, everybody that came up with that solution, how many of you live in Aurora? Just asking, because I know city employees don't have to live in Aurora.
Mr. Chairman?
Just so that I understand, when you bring up roads, could you name a couple of the, are you talking like Galena?
Route, oh, sorry, Route 59.
31.
Ogden, Galena, New York, Indian Trail.
Eola?
Eola, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Lake, Broadway, Orchard.
Got it, thank you.
Can I second his on basically the distance, the proximity to schools? I can, I can literally throw a stone 500 feet, and to me, that just does not cut it. I will second his opinion on if this is gonna happen, it needs to be further away from schools, especially a lot of our high schools are on arterial roads. So we don't want our kids having that easily access to it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I just, I got a quick comment. We keep talking about kids. This is, 21 is legal, correct? It will be an ID when they go to the door, it will be heavily secured, correct? I believe, and I have dispensaries on the west side of Aurora. They're called the parking lots and the playgrounds after 7:00 PM. I see it all the time. We literally have dispensaries unregulated all over the city right now. The fact that they would have to be 21 and prove it to go in, I think is a huge step from what we have.
I'm sorry, sir, the public hearing's been closed. Other questions for staff? Hearing none, if the staff would like to make a recommendation?
Sure. Mr. Hall, I have lived in Aurora for just over 30 years, so similar, so, yeah. Both sides. You're not the only one. Right. The staff, Mr. Chairman's staff would recommend approval of the ordinance approving a tax amendment to ordinance number 3100, being the Aurora zoning ordinance to modify certain portions being Section 3.3, definition, Section 4.3, special uses and structures, and Table 1, use categories.
You've heard the staff's recommendation, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Head and seconded by Mr. Chambers. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Devine?
Yes.
Mr. Elsbree?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Mrs. Owasusappo?
Yes, with the condition of modifying the proximity to schools.
That would be a no vote because the motion didn't include that, so you would either, the motion is for, as staff recommended it.
No.
That's the, okay, thank you, that's just the motion that we're voting on.
Mr. Reynolds?
No.
The motion carries. Ed, could you just restate again where this will next be heard?
As stated earlier, this will next be heard at the BZE Committee, which is Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee meeting one week from today, Wednesday, October 9th, at 4:00 PM, 5th floor of this building.
Thank you. That's it for our agenda this evening, any other items or discussion? Our next meeting is?
Our next meeting is, regular meeting is October 16th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. If we could get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Ms. Head and seconded by Mr. Chambers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.